Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the chairman of Monashagh County Council.
Yes, thank you members and guests, officers, please be seated. Members, before we go into any of the business of the council, could I ask you please to be upstanding as a former chairman of this authority, it was obviously Mrs Jane Fowler at the time she passed away, her funeral was in the end of, towards the end of August there, and as she was a former chairman of this authority, I think it's appropriate we stand for a short period of time. Thank you. The leader would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you for asking council to stand in remembrance of Jane. I just wanted to reflect briefly really, it's a sad time when we lose a chairman, somebody who contributed so much to the council during their time, and it's right and proper, we recognise Jane. Jane was chairman of this council in 2009 to 2010, and I think she went on to be mayor of Abigavenny then for the year 2011/12. Jane was a massive character in the Abigavenny area. Many of you from the area would have known Jane from her days when she worked in Neville Hall, certainly with the hydro pool, and her and her husband Bill used to give swimming lessons and probably taught most of the kids in Abigavenny to swim at one time, so she will be missed. And the council, you know, wants to, I'm sure you'll all agree with me, in passing on our very best to Bill, her husband, and Jane, her daughter. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, leader. My memories of Jane are that she was a very resilient lady, and if she wanted to say something, she said it. I'll say no more than that, and I think everyone appreciated that. Before we go into the business again, of course, the Olympics and the Paralympics are now over. I think it's appropriate for this council to send its best wishes to all of the Welsh participants, particularly those from Monashagh. Next, Friday next week, they're being welcomed at the centres of Cardiff, and I, as chairman of this authority, have been invited to go down there, just for your information. Could we have apologies for absence, please? Are there any? Councillor Hackett P. What were the apologies for, please?
Councillor Sarah Jones.
And Ruth Edwards.
Councillor Petroni, and then councillor...
And councillor James George.
Councillor Howarth.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and good afternoon, senior officers. I have councillor Chapman and councillor John Marshall.
Thank you very much. There are no public open forum items. So item three is the chairman's report and receipt of petition, sorry, but there are no petitions. You have the report, it is there, as I said, as you under item three, and it's for your information.
Mr Chairman, can I just recognise all of your hard work through the East Edford Week? You were there at several occasions, and I know you worked above and beyond in your term of office, but it was a special occasion for Monashagh. We were really pleased the East Edford was there, and I think it went off well. And I think massive congratulations in order for all those of our staff who made that happen, and to the likes of yourself who put in such an effort to make sure Monashagh was really well presented on that event.
Yeah, and you know what was important for me, if I could just say this before councillor Howarth comes in, was Elvis Roberts was the managing director of the East Edford organisation. He was full of praise for absolutely everyone from Monashagh who went there, who spoke to him, and for all the help that they had, and if they had a problem, it was resolved virtually within minutes. So, you know, and his officials as well, they were full of praise. So that's going to be a plus for us as Monashagh County Council. Councillor Howarth.
Yes, Chairman, just echoing the leader's words there, and just praise for our staff who put many, many hours into making sure that we were well represented within the East Edford. And for yourself, Chairman, we did note from your report on the agenda, many members within our group said, what a busy time we've had, so we thank you for that, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Are there any, please? Councillor Clark, councillor Strong, and councillor Jones.
Councillor, Chairman, on page sixteen, when it gets to the action list, the Vellathon is mentioned, and at that point, we will need to leave the room.
Thank you. Just for your information, councillor Greenland has approached me earlier on today, he wants to update members on the market situation in Abigavenny, with the Morrison site, which is now is, and also the fact that he's got an emergency motion, he needs to put the council on, it's in relation to the Vellathon. Councillor Greenland, do you want to wait until later on to...
I'll wait.
Yeah, thank you. There's no declaration of interest other than what we've just heard, so can we please confirm inside the minutes of the last meeting?
Move.
Chair, just one point of correction, if I may. It appears on page twelve, and it actually relates to the Vellathon debate. And in the motion that comes forward, it should really read that councillor, the council provisionally agrees to support the 2017 Vellathon subject to an annual review. So it's just the addition of the word provisional in there.
Without addition. That agreed? Thank you. Nothing else from those mayors? Councillor Howarth?
Yes, Chairman. May I just ask though, can we make sure that we have an action sheet? Can we see some progress on them actions, please, Chairman? Thank you.
Appreciate that. We do have an action sheet, but I appreciate the point you're making. Thank you. To note the action list of the previous meeting, and councillor Howarth, you've said what you wanted to say. Councillor Greenland, your updates and any motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'm sure members will cast their minds back to that very long meeting we had in July. And at that meeting, I gave members an update of the position with Morrisons, and I undertook to report again to this meeting following the legal negotiations. And I was confident that by today, we would indeed have a firm position that I could report to council. It's always very dangerous to actually promise such a thing when you are relying on legal advisers to move things forward. And I'm sure members will appreciate the difficulties that our officers have faced in bringing forward any conclusions to those negotiations. However, I'm happy to say that that has indeed been the case. And I want first of all, to actually thank the officers of the council who have done such amazing work, doggedly pursuing this, so that we would have a final position known by today. And I would particularly like to mention Deb Hill Howells, who has been involved in this project for more years than I can remember, really. And she has been working extremely hard over the intervening period. We have agreed with Morrisons a press release which will be issued now, and perhaps if I can, read it to members in its entirety. On Thursday, the 22nd of September, Monashagh County Council and supermarket chain Morrisons signed a lease to finalise plans for a supermarket to be built on the cattle market site in Abigavenny. The long awaited agreement will now enable the process to begin, councillor Bob Greenland said, etc. We are pleased to confirm that Monashagh County Council and Morrisons have now formally entered into the lease for the site of the Abigavenny cattle market to enable the long awaited construction of a new food store in the heart of Abigavenny. The structure of the agreement is in line with that previously agreed. However, the financial payments have been varied to reflect the change in market conditions since the contract was originally entered to in 2010. A premium of thirteen million, seven hundred and fifty thousand has been paid, and rental payments of a hundred and sixty thousand per annum will be payable from February 2018 for a period of twenty five years. Both MCC and Morrisons are now keen to move the development of the site forward, and a planning application for an amended supermarket scheme has been received by our planning authority. The planning team are awaiting additional information and amended plans to support the application, and public consultation will commence as soon as these are received. Our planning officer expects to receive the information and plans in a fortnight, that's a fortnight from today, and aims to report the application to December's planning committee meeting. Just to, that's the end of the statement. Just to remind members, the original deal was that we should lease, on a hundred and twenty five year lease, two Morrisons, the site, for sixteen point seven five million. In total, as the statement says, we received a deposit of ten percent of that one million six hundred and seventy five thousand some time ago, and I can now confirm that the balance of that, so the total being that we will have received of thirteen million seven hundred and fifty thousand, is now, as of this morning, in our bank account. If you want to work out what a hundred and sixty thousand for twenty five years, if you haven't already done so, it works out at four million pounds. So I think we've reached a very good position in terms of the deal. It gives certainty to the town of Abigavenny that there will be a supermarket built on that site, that that site won't be left derelict for some years, and I believe that Morrisons are hoping that the supermarket will be open by Christmas 2017. I would also like to thank the senior executives of Morrisons, who over the last couple of months have really helped to push this deal forward. And I know that they are keen that they should open in Abigavenny. It is one, I think, of only two such sites that they will be developing in the near future. That's how much they want to come to Abigavenny. And I think unless there are any questions from members, that completes what I have to say on Morrisons.
Thank you, councillor Greenland. It's a long awaited result from a very long saga. Councillor Prosser.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'm the member for the part where the store will be built, and I'm pleased to hear the news. I'm constantly being asked, what's the progress, what's the progress? It's been several years now, you know, and it's been a moving situation. So I'm very pleased to hear that. It gives confidence to the future of Abigavenny, and let's hope it brings a lot of footfall into Abigavenny as well, for the prosperity of all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Anyone else want to say about it? Councillor Dowie.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sure all members will support Bob's comments about the hard work put in by the officers. I for sure will. But I would like to acknowledge Bob's work himself in getting this scheme to fruition. He has been under quite a lot of pressure from all sides of, if you like, the elected members here, and he has been firm and fair all the way through, and I think he has done an excellent job in bringing this scheme home. I applaud him for his efforts.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Howarth.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and hopefully and gladly we'll see some movement on delivering the store in Abigavenny. What I'd like to ask the cabinet member, as it being an emergency announcement, will there be any finer detail with any papers, etc., for us as council or councillors, reference to what was agreed and what we're going to have now on the size of the store, in square meters, etc., and a drawing perhaps? Will it go back to planning? I just, I need some, just some finer detail. Or will it go to cabinet to endorse everything? I'd just like a little bit more few words from the cabinet member on the direction now as a council, we do take on following this through. Thank you.
Obviously, as part of the, in answer to the question about the size of the store, that will be revealed within a few days when the planning, or the plans are available for everyone to see. I can tell you that it is very, very similar to the previous size of store, but it is a modern approach to their marketing, so the store will look quite different. I should also just emphasise that whilst we all would like to see this up and running as soon as possible, we cannot know what will be the outcome of the planning application. That is a matter for the planning authority, that is a matter for the planning committee, and we just hope that they will be able to work through this and find a suitable recommendation for approval that they can go with. As far as any other details of the scheme are concerned, any member is of course entitled to know the full details, and if there are any specific details that you would like to know about, then please contact Deb Hill Howells, and I'm sure she'll be able to fill you in on that. Chairman, would it be all right if I now move on to the Vellathon, or is there anything else on Morrisons?
Yeah, councillor Harris wants to say something in relation to the Morrison situation.
Thank you, Chair. No, it's just confirmation from Bob. Is the, can you confirm the total amount that we'll be receiving is thirteen point seven five million?
No, it's somewhat more than that. The capital sum that we have received so far is thirteen point seven five million, but in addition to that, over the course of the next years, next twenty five years, there's another four million to come in rentals.
Thank you for that. There doesn't appear to be any more questions of you, councillor Greenland, and that. If you would like to move to what I would call out, item six two, which is your emergency motion, please, and members have declared interest.
Thank you, Chairman.
If you'd like to wait a second, please. Thank you, councillor Greenland.
Thank you, Chair. Again, you will recall, members, the discussion that we had on the Vellathon at our last meeting in July. And we left it with the motion that we have now seen in our minutes, and officers have been in discussion with Vellathon from that time forward. And Vellathon have made quite a few concessions in terms of how this year's Vellathon would be run. They've agreed, the issue of toilets was a problem last time, and they have agreed that they would be putting in extra toilets. In fact, I think they have been saying that they would double the toilets around the areas in Monashagh. They've also agreed that rubbish areas, green zones, would be, and five or six of these would be placed around Monashagh, and competitors would be asked to drop any litter from refreshments that they have in those areas to make clearance easier. There have also been some other results coming forward that would be interesting, but the one that I particularly want to mention is road closures. They did agree at the meeting that there could be road closures in between the amateur and the professional race. However, another proposal was put to them, and that is that the road closure should stop after the amateur riders have gone through. Now, obviously, that depends upon where it is in the county, but we are talking about something around about eleven thirty in the morning, approximately. And from observation, members will know that there is then a huge gap before the professional race comes through, coming through, for instance, in Oskars, it did about one thirty. We know, we have had evidence in the last few weeks, from the Tour of Britain coming through Monashagh, that that number of professional cyclists can be dealt with by a rolling road closure. That means that instead of the road remaining closed until the afternoon, the road could open after the amateur cyclists have gone through, and then there would be a period of approximately twenty minutes between then and the afternoon, which would allow the professional race to go through on a rolling road closure basis. For those that don't know, that means that just prior to the cyclists coming through, the police would close any side roads, and they would be then kept closed by other cyclists, volunteers, motorcyclists, volunteers stopping up the traffic at those points. The police go on, close roads as the race proceeds, and immediately the race is through, and the last vehicle is through, the road is reopened. I see no reason why that cannot be adopted in Monashagh, and that, I think, would overcome the vast majority of the complaints that we've had from residents about such a long road closure. So we have put that to the Vellathon. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to come through with a decision on that. And so what I would propose now as an emergency motion, Chairman, is that this council agrees to hold the 2017 Vellathon which passes through the county, providing that the road closure will end after the amateur cyclists have gone through, and that the policing of the professional race will be through a rolling road closure. We welcome the numbers of amateur cyclists that come into the county. I think the heart of the Vellathon is actually in those fifteen thousand amateur cyclists who are encouraged to come into the county. And we would not want to see that finished, but equally, we recognise the disruption that occurs in the county mainly because of that long delay, and then just two minutes when the professional cyclists flash through the county. I think this proposal for a rolling road closure will be acceptable to members, at least I hope it will, and that's why I've put a motion forward. And I think that it is up to the Vellathon organisers to make sure that that happens, if they want it to come through Monashagh at all.
Thank you, councillor Greenland. Is there a second at her, please?
Yeah, happy to second that, Chairman, and support everything Bob's done on this. I think this is absolutely the right way forward, and I think, and I believe it is the stance that Monashagh, we should take as elected representatives of all of those people who have shared their concern. We're not saying we don't want the race here, we do want the race here, but we do want that rolling road closure for the professional race in the afternoon. Absolutely support the recommendation. Mr Jim.
Just for members to be aware, this is very much an ongoing situation in relation to updates and that. So I take it there will be continuous updates between now and what is being proposed. Thank you. Any other, councillor Prosser, then councillor Val Smith.
Thank you, Chair. I think that's a good proposal. It means we are actually listening to our constituents. I think it is important to stress, however, that effective communication takes place before the event. So in other words, if the roads are going to be opened again for a certain time, people need to know that in advance, so they can make appropriate arrangements. Because I remember the last one, when I was on a roundabout, people said, well, I was going to collect my son from so and so, how do I do it now? Because they weren't aware of it, you know. And I know we do a communication exercise, but I just want to emphasise the need. I support the motion considerably, so that we will have these gaps where we can reopen the roads, but we need to communicate that with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Val Smith?
Yes, Chairman. I think I recall the chief exec was going to ask for consideration at the start of the race, not for next year, that would be too short notice, but for future years, possibly starting at, possibly Newport, which would be of more benefit to Monashagh than the Cardiff started away. So there's no reference to that, unless I have not read my minutes properly.
Thank you for that. Do you want to respond to that straight away, councillor Greenland?
Yes, the chief executive did make those comments in relation to the 2018 Vellathon, and those are certainly matters that are being discussed and will go on being discussed as we move forward, if we move forward.
Councillor Kevin Williams, then it would be councillor Douglas Edwards after.
Thank you, Chair. Some sensible options put forward there. Thanks, Bob. I think that I could probably support it. However, my concern is the toilet in wall and the roadblocks now, because you seem to have sussed that one up. The fact that they're going to double them is fine, but I think where they're going to put them is probably more important than the fact that how many there are. And my ward, as you know, starts what people call the tumble, and that's where they stop for a rest. And there was a major problem there with cyclists urinating in front of residents, and I hope I don't get that again.
Councillor Edwards.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I understand that this date actually clashes with the possibility of the usual cycle races that take place in Abigavenny. Now, have you any news on that or any information on that, to confirm or deny?
That's a new one to me, I have to be honest. I'm not sure, I don't know whether Ian has any information on that.
Yeah.
Oh, Kelly has, okay. And just on the point while I'm...
Oh, sorry. After you finish, Kelly will like to say something about that.
And on the point that councillor Williams has made, yes, I will ask officers to consult widely on the position of the toilets with those members for whom it runs through their area.
Yeah, just very quickly to say that the Vellathon does occur annually, at least a good seven or eight weeks before the town races in Abigavenny, which is what I think you're referring to, councillor Edwards. So the Abigavenny Cycling Festival is usually mid or at the end of July, so that is a good eight weeks after the proposed date for the Vellathon. I'll check in case there's anything else going on that we don't know about, but I'm pretty sure that's fact.
Councillor Down.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Obviously, welcome the suggestions that have been put forward, although I noted that they are in fact, at this stage, still only suggestions which have not been acknowledged by the organisers. I have to say, I would contrast the Vellathon event with another event which took place over the summer, namely the Sevenbridge Half Marathon, which only came partly into Monashagh, and I would hope that it might be possible to talk to the organisers to have more of the event in Monashagh next year. But that was very well organised, there were absolutely no problems whatsoever. I have to say, the organisers within twenty four hours had undertaken a complete litter pick, picking up not just the stuff which had been dropped by runners, but also other litter. And I think they should be congratulated on the efficiency with which they organised the event. I cannot, of course, resist the comments, that I had a conversation with one of the organisers of the event before it took place. There were road closures, and the comment was, we very rarely get problems from residents with our road closures, we never get problems with motorists with our road closures, but it's always cyclists who seem to be the problem.
Thank you for that, councillor Down. No one else wishing to speak on it? In which case, do you sum up, please, councillor Greenland, before we go to the vote?
Yes, and it might be worth just clarifying it for councillor Down's benefit as well, that... that if the Velathon organisers are not prepared to organise a rolling road closure through the county, then we will not as a council be prepared to allow the Velathon to come through the county in two thousand and seventeen. So we propose that the Velathon be, take place in the county in two thousand and seventeen, subject to the, there being a rolling road closure for the professional race and the reopening of the road as soon as the amateur cyclists have passed through.
Thank you for that. Now it's your turn to show your vote in favour of what councillor Greenland has proposed. Please, those in favour, show. Thank you very much. Thank you, members. The next item on the agenda, seven one, is the motion from county councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully, it's fairly self-explanatory, but just for members' understanding, I tabled this motion as a result of some anecdotal evidence that we'd received, and also that councillor Greenland and I received around what appears to be an increase in the use of zero hours or casual contracts in this authority. And now, I don't know if that is the case. I have got some information about the use of the contracts, but, you know, we talk frequently, members, that about our workforce being our most valuable asset, and that if we treat them well, that they will in turn treat our citizens well. So I suppose that I'd like to put this motion to you in the spirit of understanding what our current situation is, and it is, for example, ACAS's recommendation that where casual contracts are used, that the employer reviews those frequently to ensure that they are being used appropriately. Now, I'm not suggesting that they are not being used appropriately in this authority, I'm just suggesting that it's helpful for us to understand that as responsible employers, and to ensure that of the sort of, well, between eight and six per cent of our workforce, depending on if we take out, for example, things like examine vigilation, that those members of staff are on the appropriate contract for the role that they're performing and for the frequency of which they work for this authority, so that instead of, you know, if they are workers and employed on a very casual basis, then they are perhaps on the right contract for both them and the authority. However, obviously, I'm sure that we've all been party to some of the wider debate around the use of these type of contracts. So I just simply ask members to agree to take stock of this, to understand the trends, to understand what that looks like for our employees, and what that looks like for our services. And I'm kind of interested in what's underneath those figures, and particularly to understand if there's any disproportionality in terms of, you know, those with protected characteristics, for example, within that area. So I think that's all I'd like to say at the moment, members. I'll sum up at the end if there's anything that comes to light during the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Is there a second to that motion first? Yes, seconded by councillor Howard. I know this is set at its next meeting, but I think councillor Murphy may respond to, respond to this particular motion. We'll see what happens after.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And yes, indeed, the motion does say for it to be discussed at the next meeting, and from that point of view, I do have a lot of information here. It's exactly the same information as already been supplied to councillor Taylor. And it does refer to the, to the non-defiend hours contract, as I prefer to call them, because there is a lot of bad press about a definition of what are referred to in the press as zero hour contracts, and these are certainly not them. Anyway, the position is that I'm quite happy to circulate to all members the breakdown of just what employees we have within these, this category, and the departments that they're employed in. There are some three hundred and eighteen employees with no contracted hours, but there's certainly not a sustained effort to introduce these form of contracts, and every department always looks at the terms and conditions with which they engage people to make sure that these, these types of contracts are appropriate. If you look at the breakdown, councillor Taylor referred to examine invigilators, there's sixty-seven of them, clearly they're only, they only need to be available as and when there's some exams to invigorate on. There are thirty-five supply teachers, and by the same definition, they're only required when, when they're required. And that, if you take those out, it does come down to two hundred and sixteen. But when you get this email, you'll see that a lot of departments have got one in, some have got two in, casual leisure assistance is twenty-four, there's not many in most departments. So the covering email with this schedule does give explanations of who's what and why. It's worth bearing in mind that a lot of them will be students who just want the odd hour here and there, and they're counted in amongst this, this list. So to enable members to have a good look at this prior to the discussion, which I'm assuming we will have at the next meeting, because that's what the motion calls for, you will at least have that information to be able to form an opinion.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Watts, Armand Watts.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Easton afterwards.
Thank you, Chair. This is, sorry if I'm slightly confused here, does this information correlate with the people that we basically employ as additional service providers? So basically, the service providers under contract, do, would we know? So I'm talking about people who are not, or people who are indirectly employed to the county council, so for people in elderly care, et cetera, et cetera. Can we have some further definition of that? And I guess my point of reference is really, Chair, is that, you know, councillor Murphy mentioned they have a lot of bad press. Well, there's a reason they have a lot of bad press, and that's because they erode the wellbeing and, I guess, the general welfare of ordinary people, and give no stability. So that is the reason they have bad press. It's justifiable. I don't want to argue about some antics, but they are zero hour contracts.
Before councillor Easton, Captain, do you want to respond to that, councillor Murphy?
Yes, please, Chair. I don't think we're talking about the same thing. We're talking about people who make themselves available on an as and when required basis. There's no mutuality of obligation. If we call on them, they don't have to accept. If they're not available, they're not available. That doesn't stop us asking them again. It's just to have a pool of people who can be called on when the circumstances dictate. These people are not with us on a regular basis, they're here as and when, they choose to have this arrangement with us, and certainly nobody is disadvantaged. If we get a situation where engagement increases to a point where employment is appropriate, well then, it's reviewed on that basis.
Thank you. Councillor Easton?
Thank you, Chair. My comment is very similar to that of councillor Watts. In terms of the list I've got here regarding casual staff to be used as and, as and when they're available and if they're required, I understand the invigilators, I understand the, what's the last one, the supply teachers, I know some of them. I don't understand why you've included somebody who's doing six hundred hours a year, or two people who are doing six hundred hours a year, that's basically a seasonal contract as far as I'm concerned, which is quite regular and normal. But the biggest concern I've got is that whilst the authority, whilst we, the authority, appear to be working, in councillor Murphy's view, within the spirit of not forcing people into a, into a zero hour contract, the underlying concern I've got is that if we got contractors working for us, and I think we should ensure that contractors who are employed by us themselves do not imply people on zero hour contracts. I don't think it should be a hidden contract, I think that that should be just as open. I think we've got as much concern for those, the welfare of those employees who are not directly employed by us, not to be put onto zero contracts. Internally, it doesn't seem a problem to me. The three comments I made, I think some of them should be, could be taken out, because as I say, six hundred hours a season is a, is a contract which is quite feasible as far as I'm concerned. But it's the underlying concern about people who are employed by us through contractors.
Thank you, councillor Fox.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Chairman. I think we'll all agree with the motion as written. I know there's almost a, possibly a want to get into the bigger debate at the moment, but in fairness, I think Phil has offered that information. I hope that perhaps we can capture some of the other questions which are raised by Armand and Tony, perhaps, and that will feature in the covering report, which can come to that next meeting. So, Miss Chairman, I'm very happy, and I think our group is very happy to have this report to our next meeting in line with the motion, and look forward to the debate and a deeper understanding of this when we all have the information before us, so we can actually have a good and proper debate around this. Miss Chairman, thank you.
Councillor Crook and councillor Maureen Powell indicated they want to speak on this, but in relation to what's just been said, and I look into the motion, and it's councillor Taylor's motion, is that at its next meeting, the council receive a full evaluation of. So I mean, what we don't want is repetitive comments in the...
What we do want there is a chance to speak on the motion, isn't it?
Yeah, what, you know, I think we need to wind it up after councillor Powell, so that, or councillor Powell doesn't want, so councillor Crook, you can make your comments now, but I think we wait for the, for the evaluation of councillor Murphy. Councillor Howard wants to speak, but he was a second as well. Okay, we'll take councillor Howard and councillor Kevin Williams, after you, councillor Crook.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make a few quick points, really. Thank councillor Murphy for that information, very interesting, very widespread, exactly what was being looked for, I suppose, but councillor Murphy used the word certainly, certainly there's nobody in a situation that they don't want to be in due to these zero hour contracts. The whole point of this motion is to actually have that certainty. I mean, you know, we're all intelligent people, you, we don't know, we can't stand up here, you wouldn't put the lives of your children on it, would you? There's no certainty. So the whole point of this is to ensure that there is certainty, and ensure that we can stand up and say that with certainty, which is something that I'm sure that we all agree should be something in Monmouthshire. And I think the wider aspect of it is that it certainly needs to look at, you know, the white, our contracts, our supply chain, there's no point saying, well, we don't do it, but we employ seven hundred people that, you know, do do it through contracts. So we need to ensure that that is something that we look into through the process. And I'd like to see at the next meeting a plan that takes into account that, as well as taking it out of our own employment, but also out of our contractors as well. Okay.
Thank you, councillor Crook. Councillor Howard?
I withdraw, Chair.
And then councillor Williams, sorry.
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. We discussed this at great length in the Labour Group. It's something which I have a great interest in, being a trade unionist. These contracts are generally, I suppose you could call them a boil on the backside of the world. They are very insecure for those that are on zero hours. The argument about the supply teachers and the examine vigilators, yeah, okay, I can see it, however, if a supply teacher on a regular basis is working five hundred hours a month, two hundred hours a year, or whatever it is, to me, that's more than a zero hours contract, even if it's as and when. There's obviously some sort of practice set in there where they are needed for that length of time, so we should be taking serious look at that. Councillor Murphy assures us that none of these are exploitive, and we would never go down that route of actively seeking to put people on zero hours. So what we would like to do in the Labour Group is add a sentence to the end of the motion that says, where they are deemed to be exploitative, exploitative, whatever the word is, Monmouthshire County Council will ban them.
Councillor Taylor, do you want to, do you want to accept that addition to your motion, please? But, and at this point, I think there's no, I said we will come to the end of this, because it's going to be for the next meeting. Do you want to sum up your motion, please, with due consideration of what's just been said by councillor Williams?
I understand councillor Williams' sentiments, but I think probably it would be helpful to see, to have that evaluation before us, and if there is any evidence that there is any exploitative relationships within that, or any disproportionality, then I think that it's councils' opportunity and right and duty to seek further clarification. I mean, at the moment, I don't have any information or evidence to suggest that that is the case, but I think, I just don't want to end up debating another motion for sort of another hour that then isn't agreed. So it may be helpful to stick where we are, in that we can have that report, councillors, and we can have that debate at the next meeting. Thank you.
Right, members, clearly, I said, because this is coming up at the next meeting, and councillor Taylor is not prepared to accept, and he wasn't put forward as an amendment in addition to the motion.
Chair, sorry, it was put forward as an amendment, you just seconded.
Sorry, wait a minute, please. Was it to be, was it an amendment? Did you say it's an amendment?
Yes, in addition to the sentence at the end, Chair.
Okay. But councillor Taylor, okay, we have, we have to debate the amendment. Now, is there a second to that amendment, please? Yeah, okay. We now debate an amendment which is in addition to councillor Taylor's motion, which will come forward to the next meeting. Councillor Fox first, please, and then councillor Howard.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. I recognise the Kevin's sentiments, and I'm sure we're all willing to get into a discussion about that, but I think it's wrong to jump to preempt the whole meeting we're going to have with the information provided to all of us, so we can actually make a considered response. And I'm uncomfortable with just adding something on at this stage. The motion is a very, very clear motion here, asking us to consider this at the next meeting, which we've all conceded to, we all want the information, there's a depth of additional information we probably want, and it gives us time to collect that. The adding and making a commitment on something without that evidence is clearly wrong, so I'm afraid whilst I've got, I have free sympathy for having a deeper look at this, and will take part in the next meeting about this, I can't support that addition at this time, Miss Chairman.
Just a second, please. This is going to be discussed at the next meeting, there'll be ample opportunity at the next meeting to make amendments to this motion. This motion is going forward to the next meeting, and of course, it's following, in the meantime, there's going to be an evaluation circulated by councillor Murphy for all members. And once that's done, you might put a different complexion on it. So I'm suggesting to you that we leave this motion now for the next meeting, because what we don't want to do is discuss everything now, and then everything else again in the next meeting. There's no, there's no point in just doing it twice, but it won't happen twice.
I'm taking the vote on the amendment now, I appreciate that. There isn't a vote for councillor Crook, are you speaking on this amendment?
Yes, Chair, I would like to speak on the amendment. I think that it's important that we have a proper democratic process, and we can all, along with our code of conduct, speak as it should speak. Do you not think?
First of all, there's a second to the amendment, and that which is councillor Petroni. And do you want to speak on this, councillor Petroni, and we'll take, we'll take others in, you can come in after. Sorry, I'm, excuse me, I'm chair in this meeting, no one else, councillor Petroni.
Sorry, Chair, a bit of confusion there.
We will come to you in time, but councillor Petroni indicated first.
I'm seconding the amendment, Chairman, because I don't understand why we need to have a review if councillor Murphy is certain that we don't use exploitative contracts, and no one believes in... and no one believes in exploitative contracts, then why can't we just all agree now that if the evidence, whether they exist, whether we use them or not, we're just explicitly stating now that we won't countenance any use of them whatsoever? And it's been clear what an exploitative contract is, is to employees to be taken from being forced to be available all hours, or being cancelled shifts at short notice without any compensation. So, it's very clear, and whether we use them or not, we're just saying now, we will not countenance any use of them at all. It's surprising the independents and Tories don't believe the same thing.
Could we please concentrate on what the amendment was, rather than everything else? Councillor Crook and then councillor Watts.
Yeah, the amendment was that if it was found to be exploitative, then Monmasshire County Council would ban them. So, I just wanted to clarify, the leader of our council, Peter Fox, saying that he feels uncomfortable with that notion. You're uncomfortable that if it's found that we're being exploitative, that you want to ban them? I mean, we're not saying we're going to ban them, if it is found, if the review finds that they're exploitative, then we wish to ban them. That is the amendment, and that's what you've just said you're uncomfortable about. Sorry, I haven't finished yet, sorry. Just as I was trying to speak, unless my hearing failed me, I'm sure that somebody, when I was trying to make this democratic process continue, as we're allowed to speak on the amendment, somebody said, I would just slap her. So, unless my hearing failed me very badly, then I'm sure that somebody might be in a very large amount of trouble, and all of your colleagues sat next to you and making faces as if, you know, there's not going to be much sticking up for you, because I heard that, and that is absolutely disgusting. So, I can be a silly little girl, you can slap me, but you won't stop me saying what I want to say.
Can we stick to, yeah, we don't know unnecessary comments or derogatory comments made of anyone in this chamber, it's not on, I'm telling you all that now. Councillor Watts.
Chair, I mean, it's, just a second.
I need to clarify, because I was asked to...
For clarification, you can come back, councillor Watts.
Jessica, thank you for asking me for clarification. All I'm saying is I'm uncomfortable to discuss this whole situation without all of you having all of the information you need to make a considered debate around this. It's right and proper, that is democracy, and that is what I'm suggesting we do. I absolutely agree with the motion, I too want to take part and understand the deeper ramifications of that, and then we can move on to making whatever amendments we wish at that time. All I'm just saying is, it's premature to discuss this without you all having the information. If you didn't have your information on another report, they'd be up in the air, up and down, saying where is the information? I'm asking, let's adhere to the motion which is put, and then address everything at that next meeting.
Councillor Watts.
I think what Peter Fox, I understand the argument, Chair, I think what Peter Fox is trying to say is we're trying, in some way, that we're trying to have a discussion and put the cart before the horse, as they would say in Monmasshire. But I think it's really a statement of intent. I think the starting point is that we simply do not agree, we do not believe it's ethical, and regardless of the information, whether we have or we haven't, we're in a good place to start with. And so, if there is that consensus, I think that the Labour Group, to be fair, and I know you think I'm, because I'm a member of the Labour Group, I think that, looking at it objectively, I think we've got it dead right. I don't think there's anything wrong about this. So, it's a statement of intent, there is nothing wrong with that. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Blake, could we please keep our comments on what the amendment is?
I think the original motion was a prompt of good practice, really. It's basically saying that we need to annually monitor and review the use of zero hour contracts to ensure that we're not misusing them, using them inappropriately. I think this moves it forward, a report for next council meeting, so we can discuss it, and then out of that, out of that evidence and information, we may need to go down the route of saying no, to say busy, zero tolerance level to zero contracts. But we need the information first, because sometimes, and I'm from HR background, and I really appall all zero hour contracts, sometimes they are appropriate, and sometimes people want them and want to use them, but we need to see the evidence to see if we are abusing the situation or not first.
Just a second, everything my colleagues just spoke about, I can't agree to something, an amendment to a motion, which I did agree to the motion, amendment to that motion, actually, without the information before me here now, we're just in the dark. I was going to suggest, but maybe I've got a better route of coming back to council, went to select to actually have a look at a report, but better still, coming to full council is even better still, but I won't support the amendment to the motion, I'll stay with the motion. Thank you.
You have that opportunity councillor Howarth, councillor Giles Howarth, no, you don't speak. No one else? Councillor Prosser.
Yes, I agree with the sentiment of the amendment, because I'm against exploitative contracts in that way, but I want to hear the whole argument first, because let's say we did find one, and let's say the person who's using that contract says, for goodness' sake, don't ban it, I need this for the next six weeks, whatever, we might say, okay, we'll adjust it, we'll revise it, we'll modify the contract, or whatever. In other words, we haven't heard the whole argument. So, I'm quite in favour of the original motion, but we will hear the whole argument, and if we feel there's a certain contract that needs to be stopped, banned, adjusted, moved, whatever, then we would take that appropriate action. But I'm in favour of the original motion, I agree with the sentiment of the amendment, but I'm sorry, I can't support it.
Councillor Williams, would you please repeat what your addition to that, to the original motion by councillor Francis Taylor is, and then will you go to the vote?
Certainly, Chair. It's a simple sentence, sorry, an uncomplicated sentence, added on at the end, which just states that if any of those contracts are found to be exploitative, and that won't include those that, by mutual agreement, are okay, obviously, that we will remove the use of them. Quite simple, I don't see why we need to wait a month for that.
Thank you. Everyone now understands what the addition to councillor Taylor's motion is. Those in favour of that amendment, please show.
That's ten for the motion, Chair.
The motion goes forward the next meeting, is the... Sorry, we've got to take a vote on the substant, what is the motion now? It's not subject to alteration. Those in favour of the motion, please show. Yeah, thank you, Members. Councillor Taylor, the next one is yours as well.
Yes, I'll be brief, because I didn't think that that would take quite so much debate. Okay, so this hopefully will be fairly straightforward, I don't think I should say that, really. So, I put this motion forward as discussed with Democratic Services Committee, all Members will undoubtedly be acutely aware that we are moving towards the local government elections in 2017, and that is not the only single motivating factor, because I think we all would agree, I hope, that we have a duty to promote democratic engagement all the time. We have a duty to support people to exercise their most basic of democratic rights in registering and using their vote, and I'm sure we'd all wish to do that. What I'm asking you to do, Members, is agree that you will support, that all groups will support Democratic Services Committee and its endeavours to promote democratic engagement. And we'll be doing, we plan to do a single event perhaps in Democracy Week, and some further events in the new year. But it is really important that that is well supported across the spectrum, so by all groups. And so, I would just ask Members that you will support in numbers, because we don't want this to end up just being, you know, a very small endeavour, opportunities for us to engage with our citizens to promote democracy. That's it, thank you.
Second, Mr Chairman, and whilst on my seat, can I thank Frances for bringing that forward? It's something we've always done in Monmasshire, is take part in Democracy Week and other events throughout, it's so important we engage with people to help them understand what the opportunities are here, and also with our young people, to help them understand what the whole process looks like, and perhaps encourage them to get involved in future. I pledge my support, Frances, and I'm sure many of the Members in this chamber will take an active part in helping the Democratic Services going forward, so thank you for bringing the motion, I hope we don't need a great big debate on it, Mr Chairman, and we just agree it.
Hopefully not. Councillor Howarth, do you want to speak on this one, or were you just seconding? Councillor Eason, and then councillor Petroni.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I'll be brief, my support, what councillor Taylor's brought to us, but you remember, at the beginning of this council, we made a choice to reduce our select committees from eleven to nine, so we get full democratic deliverance. That seems to be failing at the moment, we get many meetings where we're just about quorum. So, I think that all Members have got the responsibility to ensure that we attend our select meetings, and we deliberate them as best we can. Whether we should go back to eleven, I don't know, but nine also seems to be failing.
Thank you. Councillor Petroni.
Yes, Chairman, I don't know why we even had this motion, it's a statement of the bleeding obvious. I don't know where councillor Francis Taylor has been, but I distinctly remember going to Local Democracy Week at chapter school with councillor Farley and councillor Duffey, and we had a massive debate in front of, I don't know, maybe 200 students in front of us. The council has always done it, we've always been there, Labour and Tories have always been there as far as I can see, I don't know where the independents have been.
Thank you. Councillor Sarah Jones.
I think it was worthwhile bringing this motion forward, and I think applaud councillor Francis Taylor and the other chairs of this committee who've been before her in trying to support the work in terms of democratic engagement. One of the key things that we should be doing as councillors is producing annual reports, and that's a key part of democratic process. And my understanding is there's only six of us that have actually produced those reports for last year, so even if that's a way to raise awareness about our role and what we should be doing, then I think it's a very, very positive thing to do.
Thank you councillor Jones, and as one of the six who've submitted annual reports so far, I urge the rest of you to do so as soon as. Can we, it seems apparent that Members want to support this, please show your votes in favour, as is carried substantially, thank you. Sorry, item eight is the Wales Audit Office report on the annual improvement. With us from the Wales Audit Office, we have Mr David Wilson and Mr Terry Lewis. I trust Mr David Wilson is going to introduce this, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. This is the annual report that we usually present to you around this time of the year. It draws together the key messages from the work of relevant regulators, Wales Audit Office, ESTIN, CSSIW, and the Welsh Language Commissioner during 2015-16, and it includes the Auditor General's assessment of whether the council is likely to comply with a local government measure in the year that we're in, 2016-17. The overall conclusion in the report recognises the progress that Monmasshire has made, and we've concluded that, based on and limited to the work carried out by the Wales Audit Office and relevant regulators, the Auditor General believes that the council will comply with the requirements of the measure during 2016-17, provided that it continues to maintain the current pace of improvement. We recognise progress made to implement proposals for improvement since our corporate assessment around specifically the financial resilience, improvement planning, performance management, and governance, although the council does recognise that it still has work to do in these areas. We also recognise that ESTIN considers that the authority is no longer in need of special measures, and has removed it from further follow-up activity. Similarly, CSSIW reported good progress with a transformation in practice agenda, and that it is well placed to meet the requirements as set out in the Social Services and Wellbeing Wales Act. Members will have seen the various reports that are referenced within the air, and have discussed these, but I'm happy to take any specific questions now.
Councillor Farley.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the report. One of the items that is covered in the report is the Gwent Frailty Project. I don't want to talk about the Gwent Frailty Project, but to use it as an example of one or two other things that might reasonably be expected to be found, if not actually in this report, but in the future. What I have in mind is, in fact, I think we met in the course of it, there's been a considerable amount of involvement by this council in terms of accountability and performance in the Education Achievement Service, which, like the Gwent Frailty Project, is a joint venture with others. I would hope that future reports might acknowledge that, because it would then give us an even more complete picture of the range of activities that are inspected and reviewed, and which reflect our activities.
Councillor Fox.
Thank you, Chairman, on that last point, David will, I'm sure, answer it, but I'm sure the EAS and its inspection might focus in next year's air perhaps, anyway, but David will answer that. I just really want to thank David for coming today and feeding back where we are, we've been on a journey over the last few years, and I'm really pleased with the progress we're making. However, I do recognise there are still proposals for improvement, and I think there should always be proposals for improvement in every organisation, because if they didn't have them, they'd be perfect, and I don't think there's a perfect council out there. But I am pleased that, clearly pleased we're out of special measures, I'm pleased at CCSIW's report, and their pleasure that we are in a good place. It's quite hard when you have so many regulators in the organisation constantly, but they have an important role to play, and we have to acknowledge that, and I welcome that challenge, and it drives a better council and drives better outcomes for the people we serve. So, can I thank all regulators who have been part of that improvement journey we've been on? I'm pleased that it's had good effect, and that we are well placed to move forward. We acknowledge that there aren't any formal recommendations, that's a good thing, but we do acknowledge that there are proposals for improvement, which we will keep working with WA on, and obviously, we will hopefully improve those well in advance if you've been able to come and challenge us on them. So, thank you, David.
Thank you councillor Fox. Before I bring in councillor Petroni, just for Members' information, Audit Committee on Thursday last week accepted this report. Councillor Petroni.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. On page 24 electronically of the report, point 14, and there's like a three bullet points, so page 34 electronically, and point 14, third bullet point down, although the council has taken action to improve the accuracy and quality of its performance data, those actions have yet not been fully effective. It's not really, doesn't really explain what you mean by fully effective, in what sense do you mean not fully effective? Is this what you mean? I'm on the local, the data hub, and I'm looking at the Labour dashboard, which doesn't still appear to be regularly updated. For example, we've had no data relating to proportion of children living in low income family households in Monmasshire for the last, well, two, three years I can see on that system. Is that what you kind of mean?
Thank you councillor. Can I just double check the page number with you? Not on the, your agenda papers there.
It'd be ten of yours.
Thank you. Which bullet point was it, sorry?
The third one.
The third bullet point. Yes, the point that we're making there is that as part of the work, we check the, or test the accuracy of the data. We tested a number of PIs, I think we tested six performance indicators in total, we found that three of them were inaccurate. The reasons that they were inaccurate, one of them was because it related to statutory visits, the recording of them within a certain period, and when we tested that information, some of the information had gone in late, so therefore, the performance indicator was wrongly reported. We found that sickness absence was under-reported, and we found an error in the calculation of leisure centre visits. So, we found three performance indicators that were inaccurate, and therefore, that's where we came to that conclusion.
You want to come back councillor Petroni?
Yes, that's really interesting. In what way was sickness under-reported? Could you give us more detail on that, please?
I don't have the detail to hand on that. All I know is that when we checked it, we tested it, it was under-reported. I can get that information for you, but I don't have it at the moment.
Councillor Hayward.
Thank you, Chairman. On page 23 of the report, the Auditor General says that the council had generally affected financial governance, but its financial planning and control arrangements were not fully embedded or delivering effectively. And the next bullet point, we say the council made progress in improving its governance arrangements, although more work was needed to strengthen the transparency of decision making and recording. And this seems to be saying that the council seems to be working... And this seems to be saying that the council seems to be working effectively, but the communication within the council is poor. I'd just like your opinion, is this because officers are not keeping members fully briefed or is it because members are not challenging officers in the correct way?
In terms of the financial planning, what we've looked at is the information that you receive as members when making your decisions and the way that the council goes about planning and what we've found is that there are improvements that's required to that process. When you make the decisions, it's important that you have the information, all the information that you need to make an informed decision. We have to balance that against the scale of the work that the council does in terms of putting savings proposals forward. And I think what happens is that sometimes you get savings proposals that are incomplete at that particular stage without all the detail, but you're still required to make decisions on them and that's the point that we're making within there.
Councillor Hayward, do you want to come back?
If I can just come back, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will. So is that the fault of officers or is it the fault of members?
It's an interesting question. Well, I suppose, I don't want to go down the route of fault, I think the point I'm making is that when officers put the information to you, I'm sure that they put all the information that they have available to you, but sometimes the individual proposals aren't fully detailed, so they provide you with the information that they have at that particular time. As members, again staying away from the fault question, but I think as members, you of course have the right to say that you don't have enough information to make that decision. So I couldn't apportion blame in any particular case, it's just the situation that you're in. When we've looked at this in retrospect, we look at what information you have, we look whether you have all the information and we decided that you didn't have all the information on all the proposals that you've approved.
Councillor Harris.
Thank you Chair, it looks like a situation of we don't know what we don't know and if it is the case that we are asked to deliberate on incomplete information and evidence that we don't know is incomplete, then we just need to know from the officers that it is incomplete and we will be receiving the up-to-date information as soon as possible and therefore it's not wise to continue with any deliberations.
I think it's clear everything we do is subject to, we have audit office investigations and whatever they find out, they'll report back to us. And I think, anyone else want to speak on this, or is it a wish of council we accept this report? Or, sorry? Sorry, Councillor Valsmith, I didn't get on them.
I was considering whether to, Councillor Hayward actually, swipe my question if you like, it related to the transparency of decision-making and recording and I was going to ask the auditor if he could give us an example of where you consider that we fell short in our decisions.
Okay, as part of this work, we looked at the recording of your decisions. We have proposed that you should minute cabinet meetings. We have examined the attendance records that you hold that are on the website, some of the information on the attendance record was inaccurate, so it's not transparent as to who was at the meeting and who wasn't. And I do accept that with these meetings being webcast, that you can see who's at the meeting and who's spoken, but the fact is that you do have information that you put on the website which has errors in it. And that's the, so in terms of transparency, it's about being open, having proper records that you have in terms of the decisions that you make and having those accessible to members of the public.
Thank you, Councillor Fox.
Just on, I'm conscious I have spoken once, but just to clarify, can we be very clear though that actually the procedures we use for recording decision logs is absolutely lawful and correct and there's nothing wrong with it, it's just that there's a difference in opinion between Wales Audit Office of recording of proceedings and ours, but there is nothing amiss with what we're doing.
Councillor Greenland.
Chairman, I'd like to thank you for the report and I take encouragement from one of the opening remarks in the recommendation, given the wide range of services provided by the council and the challenges it is facing, it would be unusual if we did not find things that can be improved. And that of course is the case, however far we go, we're never perfect. And I certainly do take on board the points that you've made and yes, we must do better, we must improve, we must go on this improvement road, but I take comfort also from the fact that we are doing pretty well according to this report, we can do better.
Councillor Crook.
Yeah, I'd just practically like to echo what Councillor Greenland said first time for everything, but completely agree. I just warn Councillor Fox though again, just because something's legal, it doesn't mean that you can't be doing better, we should always be striving to do better. It might be legal, it might be okay, but it doesn't mean that there's a better way of doing it and as Councillor Greenland just contradicted you by saying, I think it's extremely important that we continue to improve and we recognise our weaknesses to make sure that we just grow stronger.
Thank you Councillor Crook, are members wishing to accept this report? All in favour please show, thank you very much. The next item is the report of Head of Finance, section one five one officer, but I think Councillor Murphy is going to introduce this one.
Yes, thank you Chair, the accounts before us came in draft form before they went off to the Wales Audit Office for final review and these have now come back and have been reviewed by the Audit Committee last week. To date, the audit process has raised no materiality issues that prejudice the accounts and anecdotal feedback suggests that the accounts have been prepared with the same rigor as we would normally expect and I take this opportunity to thank officers for an excellent job on this, they really pulled out all of the stops. Indeed, the ISA two sixty report, this is next on the agenda, gives a clear unqualified opinion on these accounts. The external audit process is therefore complete, the audited statement of accounts requires approval by the council by the end of September. And as I said previously, the accounts have been presented to the Audit Committee and I would request approval. Terry Lewis from the WA is here to answer any questions, thank you Chair.
Before Mr Terry Lewis can come in, Councillor Eason, do you want a question please?
Please Chair, thank you. Yes Councillor Murphy, we took these before audit last week, I raised some question marks about CMC squared in terms of the lack of clarity, I picked up lack of clarity before the audit report went forward, I raised these issues in audit last week and I'll bear the Chairman's permission to leave my question until the next report before us which refers to these particular issues regarding the CMC squared, which says to me that I can't work out whether we owe nothing, whether we owe three hundred and fifty thousand pounds or whether they owe us anything, it's very unclear, but in the next report from the Audit Office, there is a bit of level there which we could possibly discuss then. Would that be okay with you or do you want to talk about it now?
Mr Lewis, do you want to respond to that or Councillor Murphy, either or, or both?
Might be best to leave it to the next item to be quite honest Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any other, sorry, go on, you want to continue?
Can I carry on then? But it's to do with the next item on the agenda which I want to refer it to as well.
Let's get to the next item first, let's deal with this one as it is. The statement of accounts is as the accounts are and they've been audited, so is it a wish of members that you accept this? Can you answer that Mr Lewis?
Yeah, just to clarify, there were some issues that were identified during the course of the audit, the one issue that we've reported in this report is the, around some of the creditors at year end, our sample testing identified that some of them should have been classified differently. Now, there would have been a lot of work for officers and ourselves to audit, to go through all the creditor payments to identify whether there are any further errors within there, therefore we've put it in the report to bring it to your attention, it's not material, we've not actually asked for it to be adjusted, but in discussions with officers, they've accepted that the system needs to improve and I think there's some proposal to change some of the coding etcetera, so in future it'd be much easier to identify the classification of some invoices.
Can I come back on that Chair?
Just a second, Councillor Murphy wants to say something on that as well.
Yes, thank you Chair, I mean basically, and this might sound like a flippant remark, but it doesn't, within the right categories on the balance sheet, it doesn't matter where they are, the bottom line's exactly the same and that's a layman's way of saying what Terry said.
Mrs Robson.
Can I just answer in relation to the CMC squared issue that Councillor Eason raised? It is raised in the auditors' report and it's under the section where we have made the correction, so it was raised by external audit, we've made the correction, the corrected version is before you today, just to clarify.
Can I come back on that Chair, please?
Yes, please.
What I'm concerned about is that in your report from the Audit Office, that you say reduce the existing provision of one hundred and twenty-two thousand pound profit to nil, that's one hundred and twenty-two thousand pounds loss in my mind, it includes a narrative explaining the potential liability for further ninety thousand pounds which could come on the council. The next note is restating the reported profit from one hundred and twenty-two thousand pounds to nil, it also requires to include additional narrative rates of funding of one hundred and forty K provided by the council for the CMC squared. So adding all those together, I'm somewhere between three or four, three or four hundred thousand pounds that this council is liable for. It doesn't seem to explain that to me, either that or I don't understand my maths, but there's something not right in the fact that you have provided amendments to the following notes, they haven't gone in the audits, they haven't been amended in the audits, it seems to me that CMC squared was not running the way we wanted it and quite honestly, if this is the result of a scheme which set up in 2011, I beg to wonder where we will be in the future if we put other things out to private concern, for example, we're looking at alternative delivery proposals, we need to be sure what we're doing, we need to be sure that our figures are correct, I don't understand the figures because they say to me we're either lost three hundred and fifty thousand pounds or we've lost nothing, I don't know.
You want clarification of the figures Councillor Eason, prepare to answer that one please. Mr Davis.
Thank you very much Chair, just to clarify and I guess to put Councillor Eason's mind at rest, the one hundred and twenty-two thousand pounds that's referred to and I guess the adjustment that's been made, that referred to a loss that was being carried in respect of CMC squared at a point in time. For members who will be aware of this, a report was taken through Cabinet in July two thousand and fifteen in order to write off losses on CMC squared of one hundred and forty thousand pounds. That one hundred and twenty-two thousand is part of that one hundred and forty thousand, there were further costs of eighteen thousand pounds and losses that were incurred beyond the financial year end that make up the one hundred and forty thousand, so that's point one. Your second point with regards to the ninety thousand pounds, CMC squared is currently carrying outstanding debtors of ninety thousand pounds which clearly will be managed going forward and clearly we will be looking to recover.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Members, would you wish to accept that report? All in favour please show? Yes, carried, thank you. The next item is the Monmouthshire County Council ISA two sixty report, Councillor Murphy, I believe you can introduce this.
Yes, thank you Chair, I'll introduce Terry Lewis who I'm sure will answer any questions, it's quite a straightforward report and the only bit that really matters is whether or not we have a qualified or an unqualified audit report and it's unqualified and quite clear.
Mr Lewis, do you want to say anything on that please?
Yes, just very briefly, because I think most of the points have already been covered. In terms of materiality, there are no errors in the accounts. It does clarify on page four of our report that materiality is two point five nine million, so an error below that wouldn't qualify your accounts. It also, things that are politically sensitive such as remuneration report we audit and we would highlight any issues with that, if you were disclosing incorrect salaries for example, might not be material, but it would be to a reader of the account, so we would qualify in respect of that. So there are no issues around there at all, as already been explained, we've completed the audit, unqualified opinion, no real significant matters, just to note that we do have a very good sort of working relationship with the council officers, the audit went relatively smoothly, we didn't have any major issues. We tried to bring some of the work forward this year, which we were successful in doing, but looking forward, there are going to be further challenges in terms of closing down the accounts earlier, doing the audit much sooner, in terms of targets that you're going to be given to close much sooner by the government. So there will be challenges going forward, we will be having further discussions about that with officers as to how that could work. It's also going to mean for us bringing some of our work forward earlier in the year rather than leave the bulk of it to the year end once we get the accounts, given that many of the transactions are taking place during the course of the year, there's no reason why we cannot change our approach and audit during the course of the year. There's still things that obviously need to be audited at year end, but we need to sort of make that change going forward. On page six, it just acknowledges that we are sort of independent and objective and there are no sort of issues to report in that respect. And as already has been said, in terms of CMC squared, the accounts incorporate all those things that we identified that needed to be changed in the accounts to present a better picture of the position, so we were quite happy with that after the changes have been made. That was all, really thank you.
Thank you Mr Lewis. No questions? Councillor Farley.
Thank you Chairman, picking up on the point which Councillor Eason started and you've just touched on, is there any advice that from a professional perspective you would be able to give the council on how it might avoid the kind of issue that we've just been discussing with CMC squared in the event that we go ahead with the alternative delivery model? As far as I can see, very similar scenario, raises the same questions of accountability, transparency etcetera, etcetera, etcetera. How can we avoid these kinds of things happening in the future if that's the road we go down?
From an audit perspective, provided you're working within the law, you can sort of organise yourselves whichever way you want, we wouldn't have a concern about that. In terms of the accountancy arrangements and governance, all we're looking for is transparency so that it's clear that the financial position on any of these areas is properly reported and a reader of the accounts is not being misled, so that's where we come from as auditors, you have wide powers to do lots of different things in different ways and that's within your gift really, but our audit role sort of starts and ends at that point.
Thank you for your answer, thank you Chairman.
Councillor Watts.
Chair, if I may, so it's a rather broad question and I guess I'm broadly fishing, but going forward, is there anything you're specifically looking at that you're concerned? Something that's caught your eye and that you're focused on now in advance? Anything, I guess anything that's ringing any bells with you at the moment?
At the moment, there's nothing that we're particularly concerned about because we would have discussions around that. Clearly going forward to next year's audit, there will be discussion shortly about any potential risks, we will review all your sort of minutes, risk registers etcetera, pick up on anything, so that's a process we will go through in the coming months for the next year's audit, but this is a sort of retrospective audit of fifteen sixteen that we've just signed off, but the audit process is ongoing.
What I was trying to say was, so I could understand that it's being rather, I guess it's a kind of a reactive kind of statement and I was looking for, you know, any kind of evidence that we were being proactive in to mitigate any kind of risks going forward and you're saying categorically no, that there's nothing on your scale to concern you at all. Thank you Chair.
I think if there's anything on the radar, we've been told about it in the report. Correct, thank Mr Lewis and of course Mr Wilson's gone now for the reports, is it a wish members that you accept those statement of accounts? Thank you very much, as clearly carried. The next item is the report, the Head of Democracy Engagement and Improvement, I think that's Councillor Murphy again, am I correct?
Chair, Councillor Greenland's going to do this one as he's been heavily involved in the Aberguany Hub all the way along.
Yes, thank you.
Yes Chair, thank you very much and our members will be well aware of the formation of the hubs that we have undertaken throughout the county. We started with the hub in Usk which incorporates many of the public We started with the hub in Usk, which incorporates many of the public services in one building. It brings together staff from various sections and the staff are retrained to be able to take forward any of the issues that come forward through the hub itself. We've done Usk, I think it's fair to say that there was quite a lot of concern amongst the residents of Usk before we started, but I think it's equally fair to say that now that the process is complete, they are very pleased with the increase in services that they are getting in Usk, delivered through the hub. We've also completed the hub in Chepstow and in Caldicott and in Monmouth, and we are remaining now with perhaps the most difficult issue, the hub in Abigavenny. We know that the existing library in Abigavenny is very small, much smaller than the population of Abigavenny and the surrounding area would really warrant, and we also know that it would be impossible to provide a good service in terms of library in the existing building that it occupies in Abigavenny. So we needed to look around and to consider options of where the new hub, bringing together the library and the one-stop shop and the other facilities that we have in the other hubs, where could we place the new hub? And it boiled down to the decision that there were two options. One was the town hall and the other was the Richards Building. Obviously, the town hall we own, the Richards Building we do not own. One of the drivers in terms of forming hubs is to reduce the numbers of buildings, we've got to reduce the overheads and the money which is spent on those buildings. So as a principle, it doesn't make much sense to consider going for yet another building rather than reducing buildings. But nevertheless, we undertook an outline business case, which you will see appended to the report, to evaluate the strengths and the weaknesses of each case. I don't intend to go through the report nor indeed the appendix in any great detail, but I think the conclusions that are drawn from it are that we would recommend to council that we provide the hub in the town council offices or the town, was it the town hall in Abigavenny? We've had some initial professional advice on how that could be achieved, and we have spoken obviously to the existing users in the town hall, principally the town council and the Borough Theatre, and from the discussions that we've had with those two principal occupants and also with the users of the library, we have come forward with a proposal with which they are all broadly in agreement. I would like to pay tribute to the town council because they have been prepared to give up the exclusive use of their town council chamber and indeed the mayor's parlour in the process of our reorganisation of the service. And you will see from the report that by doing this, we will substantially increase the floor space that is devoted to the library for Abigavenny. This will be achieved on the first floor of the building and will require a small mezzanine extension above a small part of the market hall. Now, I have heard worries from residents that this will completely change the whole ambience of the market hall. It is a very small intrusion into that space, and frankly, Chairman, when you look at the plans, I don't think it will make a material difference to the ambience that is in the market hall. You've got three recommendations in front of you. The first is that to take this further, we need to do detailed work and design on how this can all be achieved, and to one is asking for £50,000 to be released to fund the costs of this further work. We're also asking that council confirms the decision to move the hub into the town hall, and then finally, that a further report will be presented to council once these detailed design works have been completed. And again, this has been a fairly long-running issue, and Deb Hill-House has headed this one as well. So again, my thanks to Deb, it hasn't quite been as long as the Morrisons' issue, but I would hope that we will be able to complete it in a lot less time than we did the Morrisons', but I would recommend to council the report in front of you.
Is that seconded, please?
Seconded.
Yeah. Councillor Prosser, you want to say something? Councillor Powell and Councillor Howard after.
Thank you, Chair. As deputy mayor of Abigavenny Town Council and also as the sitting member for Prior Reward, so this is in my patch, I can say we've had prolonged discussions and liaison with the officers on this matter, and the town council is fully in agreement now with the proposals to date. On a personal note, I think it's going to provide a modern facility which is accessible to all, it's going to retain the mayor's parlour and a modified council chamber, so we will actually be updated if you take it that way, and I think it's, and the one-stop shop is there as well, so I think it'll be a central hub, a focal point, and will ensure that the town hall remains a focal point for the town for the forthcoming years. So I'm fully in support of it, and obviously, there's a lot more mileage to go with the detailed designs, but I support the motion to supply the funds to do that, and the sooner we do it, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Powell, Mrs. Warren Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, another member of the town council, last year's mayor, so I'm not quite honoured now. I think it's a wonderful idea. I was worried when they were going to move it somewhere else because the public are so used to coming to the one-stop shop at the bottom of the town hall that it's essential for them, and I don't think it's going to harm the ambience or the look of the building at all. And with reorganising it, we're going to be more versatile, so many of the rooms which weren't used to its full extent will be able to be moved, as we're going to make it so that we can have a bigger room when we have any sort of entertainment or reception so that you can move a wall through. There's so many possibilities without actually altering the main part of the building and the main structure, and I look forward to it. And I've managed to talk to a few of the people who are very worried and thought that the whole of the market hall was going to be covered, it's such a little amount, it won't really be even noticeable, and I'm sure that they will have just the same facilities they've always had before, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powell. Councillor Howard, followed by councillor Peter Farley.
Thank you, Chairman. I should clarify that I am supportive of the proposals and recommendations, although my questions might suggest that I think otherwise, but that's not the case. But just a few questions for clarity. Could I ask, there's 222 square metres allocated as the floor space for Baker Street currently, is that the publicly accessible space or is that the entire building? And then going on to the new site or the amended site, 372 square metres is the figure given for the first floor in the table on page 194, but if you look at the plan on page 202, that figure's attributed to just the library, and obviously, there are some other uses on that floor. So that the, my question is from that, how much bigger will the new library be compared to the old one, which doesn't seem to be apparent at all? Going on to the theatre, I welcome the proper box office area as an entry point, and reflect that I think it was about six or seven years ago, an Arts Council report noted that the existing entrance was pretty insignificant and in some ways was a barrier to the Borough Theatre becoming a revenue-funded organisation, and I wonder perhaps if since then, there might be an opportunity, although Arts Council monies have shrunk, whether or not they may be willing to support the site financially. Again, the £1,300 theatre upgrade, what does the upgrade consist of, please? Does that include the auditorium? Generally then, have we sought advice about the changes in terms of the external and internal impacts from our planners as to whether it would be acceptable and whether there might be any, or the scale of the works are likely to cause any issues for us? And then the last one on page 183, I wonder if paragraph 3.6 could be explained a little bit more, please?
Do you want to answer that one now, councillor Green? Oh, okay.
There is a lot of detailed questions, which I frankly am not entirely sure of the answers, but the expert is in the room, I think, whether you have some of the information on the clarification of the areas. As far as the amount that is in there for the Borough Theatre is concerned, this is really not dependent on the Borough Theatre actually going ahead with their alterations. The reason why those are there is because the same consultants have been used to draw up the viability report for us as were employed by the Borough Theatre. Whether the Borough Theatre proposals will come to fruition, I don't really know. I do know that much of it was to improve the auditorium. In terms of the question on planning, yes, we have taken advice from, in particular, a conservation officer because this is a listed building, and obviously, anything that we wanted to do would be very carefully looked at from the conservation point of view. But in terms of your detailed figures that you're looking for, councillor Howard, on the floor areas, I wonder if I've given Deb time to, oh, somebody else, oh, here we are, Will McLean has magically got the answers.
I'm not sure I've magically got the answers, but certainly, in the next stage of work, which we're commissioning in this report, we will be looking to find all of those things. The one thing I would just say in terms of the split between library space before and after, the model we've moved to is one whereby this is a shared space, and having recently gone out and spent time in Monmouth, Usk and Chepstow and Caldicott, you can really see how well that shared space works, and I think the interaction between people seeking advice and assurance and information and then actually using library services in and around the same place has worked really well, and I think it's testament to the actual conception of that plan and how well it's been actually implemented in all of those four towns, and I just really hope that, you know, the next stage of development in Abigavenny allows that one to go forward as well. But certainly, the specific questions you've asked, councillor, we'll come back to outside of the meeting with clarifications.
Mr. Kellyburn wants to say something about this, before councillor Peter Farley comes in.
Thanks very much, Chairman. It's just to clarify, paragraph 3.6, which I think you've questioned councillor Howard, and just to say that members will be aware that the Borough Theatre, we soon come to the end of that first year, three-year funding agreement that we had with the Borough Theatre, and obviously, the expectation was at the end of that three-year funding agreement that as far as possible, the Borough Theatre would be a self-sustaining, self-funding organisation. Now, they've been working very closely with the Arts Council of Wales, who have appointed somebody to work with them to develop a business plan, and we're awaiting sight of that business plan, then we will obviously take a lead from the Arts Council in terms of their endorsement of that business plan in order to inform any decisions that we may need to take and obviously bring back through relevant decision-making.
Thank you very much. Councillor Farley.
Thank you, Chairman. Oh, sorry. Beg your pardon.
Shall I? Thank you, Chairman. I wouldn't presume to pass comments on any of the physical aspects of this, the location, the designs, they are for those who know the place better, but I would take the opportunity to make a point that it is important that we do not lose sight of what goes on inside the service when it is eventually constructed. And I would certainly wish to be assured, and I hope that the residents of Abigavenny and its surroundings would wish to be assured, that when it comes to it, there will still be, certainly as far as the library service is concerned, a professional underpinning. I've never shared the view that all people sitting behind a computer terminal providing advice are interchangeable. I think that the various parts of these hub services need to be firmly underpinned, indeed driven by proper, trained, professional expertise. So I would make that point about the library. I've taken advice on this matter from a very authoritative source, which I won't reveal but would do privately if anybody was interested.
Excuse me. Councillor Edwards.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You would expect me as one of the other centre-town councillors and, no, I should declare an interest, I suppose, as a town councillor, because it does seriously affect the running of the town council in years to come. Can I, having declared an interest, say a very big thank you to Deb Hill-House and to Bob for their interest in this particular scheme. This report is illuminating, it's very much welcome in Abigavenny, and we're obviously delighted that in the not-too-distant future, we will have a modern facility to control the thing. I can probably answer something to do with the library, because one of the emails I sent to Deb Hill-House about six months ago is the comparisons of size, and I can confirm that with the stored space in the basement plus other areas on the ground floor, the new library will actually be more than double. It's just over 4,000 square feet compared to 2,000 square feet, which is the current library. Current library is in my ward, and initially, of course, there was a great deal of opposition from the Friends of the Abigavenny Library. That has been completely dispelled, and there was a letter in the Chronicle during the last few weeks from the chairman of the Friends, saying how much he looked forward to having a library which was very much better, much bigger, and obviously, much more important. And I think the introduction of two modern lifts, one in the front and one in the back, gives you good access to disabled people, which I think is another important consideration. Better access now to the building than ever before. I certainly support the three recommendations, and I look forward that other members here will also agree to support it today, and we look forward to the final designs when they arrive in probably a couple of weeks' time maybe? Or is that wishful thinking? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Councillor Roger Harris, followed by councillor Val Smith and councillor Howard, and I would like then to go to the vote after, please. Thank you. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Chairman. I must also declare an interest as a town councillor. I'm not going to spend long on what I've got to say because it's all been said. I look forward to these recommendations being implemented. The town hall is a focal point of the town and it will remain the focal point of the town if we actually implement these recommendations, and as has been stated, the one-stop shop will still be there, there'll be easier access with the production of two lifts, as Doug's already mentioned, and with a bit of luck, it won't take too long, I'm sure it's going to be a complicated procedure to modify this listed building, but at the end of it, we should have really lovely extra spaces there, and as I say, a focal hub for the town citizens.
Excuse me, Chairman, before the next speaker speaks on this item, councillor Edwards and Harris make a good point there, and could I suggest that all Abigavenny town councillors, not all town councillors, Robert, Abigavenny town councillors, could you please declare personal, non-prejudicial interests in the matter? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Val Smith, followed by councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any interest to declare because I'm not an Abigavenny councillor or anything like that, but I'm an elected member of Monmouthshire Council, and I've always thought that in that role, everything that happened in Monmouthshire should be of interest to me. that role, everything that happened in Monmouthshire should be of interest to me and of concern, that because I didn't live in Chepstow, it didn't really matter what happened down there. So it does matter to me. I think the proposals are good, and I can look back years and years and years ago, when there was even a proposal to put a customer service area in a shoe shop, but that was a long, long time ago. It's a good proposal. I would like to ask, are there any proposals to actually consult with the public, so they actually understand and know what is proposed? You can have a small exhibition that could make life a lot easier for anybody who's bringing forward proposals. As I say, I'm interested in Monmouthshire. I, as a member, yes, I got a vague thing with reading plans, I would actually, there have been a lot of questions raised, I'd appreciate an afternoon here with the plans set out, where members who are interested could actually come and look and possibly even come up with some suggestions that might be useful. Because I note with interest, gentlemen, your chamber, your council chamber, the Abigavenny council chamber, the proposal shows a door where I always had an urge to have a door, it would have made it operate so much more easily. So I would really appreciate, chairman, the opportunity to look at the plans and make any comments.
Councillor Howard, come in before you come in, please. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. One is reference to the old, remind me whether I haven't got the words right, Carnegie, Carnegie Library, what do they call it? Right, you've said it, not me. Have we any covenants on there, as a council, if we withdraw from that building, that actually we've got to bring that building up to a standard as reference to handing it back or back to the trust, whoever owns the building? I think the cost of that should be calculated in here as well. My second one is for Abigavenny town councillors. Actually, I think you've got a pecuniary interest in this, because you'd be having a brand-new council chamber pay by the public purse. So there may be that to think about legally. And my last question as well is... My last question also is to Kelly, as reference to the Borough Theatre. I wasn't too sure, and tell me whether I'm wrong here, Arts Council for Wales are in discussions, but the withdrawal of us as funding for the Borough Theatre, I was under the impression from select last week that we cannot withdraw straight away, it's on a percentage side of it. I just need some clarity on that, because that's what I heard last week from head of finance. Thank you.
Mr McLean, and I'll ask councillor Green to sum up then and put forward the recommendations for the vote.
Okay.
You've already spoken on this one? Oh, okay.
Point of information, it's just been mentioned that town councillors maybe have a pecuniary interest, and I'd like that to be cleared up, please.
Yes, certainly, councillor Harris. I was going to come on to that point after Will McLean speaks. It is clearly a matter for the individual member, whether or not they have personal and/or prejudicial interests. In this case, you clearly do not have a prejudicial interest, in that the code specifically states that you don't have a prejudicial interest. So you just declare, please, a personal non-prejudicial interest. I hope that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you, chair. I think there are three points I'd just like to clarify. The first is with regards to the library staff and the very specific skills that they have. With this move is to go ahead and we merge into a community hub, then those library staff will be transferred into the new setting, maintaining that skill base, which I think is important. The second point on the public engagement with regards to the designs, I think that's been one of the features of this process of getting the plans to this date, and members of the public and interested groups have had a voice in what the designs look like and have expressed their views around that. But I think it's also a good idea that we put those plans on display within this building to make sure that all members can see those. And with regards to the existing arrangements around the Carnegie Building, the details of the trust, which is legally the document that forms around that building, the details of those are contained within the business case that members have received in paragraph 2.1.3.
Thank you very much. Councillor Green, do you want to put forward the recommendations, please?
Yes, shall I cover the Borough Theatre issue? There was a question about whether or not there could be a funding, a change in the funding. The agreement that we had with the Borough Theatre Trust was that for a three-year period, after which, that initial three-year period, if we wish to alter the funding by more than 5%, we would need to give them notice of 12 months. That notice was given to the Borough Theatre Trust 12 months ago, and we are now in discussions with the Theatre Trust as how we will proceed. If that clears that up, then I just want to finally recommend to members the report. This is a sensible way forward. We know that hubs work, we know that hubs are popular with the public, and we know that in particular with libraries, that they go on offering a professional standard of service. And indeed, I saw the library figures only the other day, and the use of the libraries is going up, which I think is interesting. So I would recommend to members the report as it stands.
All in favour, please show. Thank you very much, members. There's been a request that we have a five-minute break, so I'd agree into that. Members, it's a comfort break, but please be back here in five minutes, so we can continue with the business and hopefully get home. Please take your sheets. Right, members, please take your sheets. We are on agenda item 10-2, Stage Two Improvement Plan 2015-16, and the leader councillor Fox is going to talk to this.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Sorry we've had late on return. Members will be aware that the publication of an annual improvement plan is a requirement placed on all local authorities in Wales. It's really important that the council is accountable for its performance to the citizens of Monmouthshire. This Stage Two Plan allows us the opportunity to evaluate our performance in a previous year. This plan will cover, or covers, the period April 2015 through to March of this year and relates to objectives that we agreed at council back then. And members will be familiar with the objectives, that we will improve at all key stages of education, and that we will safeguard people, whether young or old, while reducing people's dependence on social care. And the third one, we want to enable our county to thrive. The fourth, maintaining locally accessible services. And the fifth, that we want to be an efficient and sustainable organisation. Our four select committees scrutinised the achievement of improvement objectives during the year and looked at the year-end evaluation in some detail during June and July. Members present at those meetings will recall that the assessment of the performance objectives is an honest and robust one. Four of the five improvement objectives have been evaluated as good and one as adequate, and it is number five which is adequate. Cabinet have already evaluated the year-end performance figures, as they are part of our quarterly dashboard, while select committee have seen them when they scrutinise the year-end performance. This is the first time the council will have had the opportunity to view the full data set alongside the latest comparative information of other councils in Wales. The measures show most of our services are continuing to perform well, and I'm pleased our continued focus on service performance is reflected in us overall still being amongst the top-performing councils in Wales. Members, you'll see the recommendations in 3-2, that as part of the Wales Programme for Improvement, councils must, one, set improvement objectives at the beginning of each business year. These are included in the stage... Sorry, I want... Yeah, that's... Oh, sorry, moving from the recommendations. Sorry, sorry, the recommendation is that the Stage Two Improvement Plan 2016 be approved. Members, if you look down through the appendix, through the reports, you will see our contribution to each of those objectives, and you'll see how those service areas rank then further down against the comparative data from Wales, which some of us saw at Cabinet last week. Mr Chairman, happy to open it up for debate, and I'm pleased that Matt Gaetz-Houses here this afternoon, who will be able to give a more in-depth analysis if any questions arise. Thank you.
Anyone who wants to speak on this one, please. Councillor Petroni.
Yes, chairman. I just want to go on to some of the detail and just get some queries about this. Bear with me, because I have to be precise on this. On electronic copy 262, relating to number of older people receiving traditional, long-term community-based packages of social care, that's gone up. And then I looked across and it says target not applicable, and then something about a new IT system. Could that be explained to me in greater detail of why that's the case? So is it not, are we saying it hasn't actually gone up, and we've just improved how we monitor these things? On page 292 of the electronic copy, sorry, this is all about social services, indicator SCA 001, the rate of delayed transfer of care for social care reasons per thousand population aged 75. Now, we all know about our demographic change, we are all familiar with the data, the census backs up that information. We all know about hospitals and pressures, and I know the council's kind of made a big play and a big drive to keep people in their own homes, but it seems like we are failing miserably. we are failing miserably on transfers of care, which, which they experienced it with my nan in the Royal Gwent. And so, the speed of that process, where people are stuck in hospital, they're capable of maybe going home, and they get deeply frustrated, and almost in a sense their health declines as they stay in hospital, because there's delays in the bureaucratic system. And I experienced firsthand how, they just don't speak to each other. It was like, a nurse would come in and say something, then a social worker would come in and say something different, and then she'll get new information, so we get three different types of information about the state of her care within the same, within the same day. And it's, I'm just wondering, I've wondered if that's replicated across our local authority, and maybe other people, other family members are aware of their family experiencing similar situations. And there are other indicators which I could cite here about our social services and their performance, and they're not great. And I understand we're under huge pressure, I completely accept that, I accept we've poured a lot of money in the children's side, particularly looked after children, we've supported that all the way. But on the social care side, you know, this is a big issue now, it's going to be a bigger issue as each year goes past, as we all know, we really need to up our game on this.
Can we take Mr Marchant first, and then Mr Gaetz-Houses after? Because it is a two, it's at least a two-part question, as I see it, and it is respective, sorry, there are different avenues to go.
Yeah, there's two parts there. In terms of the number of people supported in the community, we obviously have a demographic which is very challenging to us, but it's one of those indicators, and we discussed it at length, really, when I presented my annual report into council, that it's very hard to give you a good answer on what good looks like. Is it good that we're providing more care and support for people, or is that an indicator which shows that all our re-abling and our wellbeing support isn't quite as good as it should be? Because, you know, our intention is that more and more people have a little bit of support or no support at all, but there's those wellbeing type arrangements which mean that they're not coming into statutory social services. So, it's why it's one of those that it's really difficult to say, you know, is it a good thing or a bad thing? And it's an apples and pears one as well, when we look at the whole of Wales, that what some local authority areas count as supporting the community, others don't. So, it's one of those where it's really, really hard when comparatively. In terms of delayed transfers of care, again, I think in the annual report which I brought, I was very explicit around the issues that we'd had last year in terms of reporting detox and the fact that there were several, at least 12 people who were indicated as a Monmasia resident, who in fact weren't Monmasia residents. They were in Mayniff Court from all over the place, but because Mayniff Court is within Monmasia, they were recorded as Monmasia residents, and that figure was just wrong. I'm very pleased to say that delayed transfers of care are back to the levels that they've historically been in Monmasia, which is very low, that we actually had zero delayed transfers of care in the last couple of months. And, you know, we continue against all the challenges that they are, and there are considerable challenges within our hospital sector, within our provider sector, particularly domiciliary and care home providers, but we continue to have a model where we reach into the hospital, we know who our residents are, we absolutely accept that it's the wrong place for people to be if their care and support needs can be met elsewhere, and we have a model which is acknowledged by the Health Board as being a successful one, which the rest of Gwent and indeed Wales look to.
Thank you. Before Mr Keelows came in, councillor Barrows, you wanted to say something as the cabinet member responsible?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It was really just, when I picked up on those two points, I just felt that I really wanted to make a contribution, and, but Claire has really kind of identified the main points of what I wanted to speak about, and really all I wanted to do was just to add to that and acknowledge that when people have anecdotal experience of this, it's very important that the perception is understood about exactly where we are in real life with respect to detox. Detox in Monmasia is not an issue, there will be individuals who will see it, but in comparative terms, it is at a very, very low level, and the figures that we're being judged by from the last financial year are just plain wrong. And also, just to make a comment about those numbers in community care, I look on that very positively, because for all the people that are being kept at home, and frail individuals that are actually in their own homes, within their own family and friends' context, I think it's vitally important that they're, and it actually goes somewhere to explaining why the use of residential care home beds has plateaued and declined in a time when the demographic is showing there are more and more older people. So, I look at that very positively. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr Gaetz-Houses?
Actually, thank you, Chairman, but I think, so the chief officer has covered the key points I would have picked up, as far as those two answers go, actually.
Sorry, councillor Petroni wanted to come back.
Did you actually answer why it wasn't applicable, the data? I don't, I don't remember if you did. And on anecdotal evidence, I accept that, that's absolutely a valid point about, but it matters to people, and they, that's when they talk to their community, and they talk to their family, and then it all filters, so it's really important about bureaucracies, speaking to each other. I accept it's not just Monmasia care councils, it's the health service as well, but it can be very confusing for particularly people of an older generation, where they're getting told different bits of information from different bits of hierarchy, and they get really, really confused, as anyone would.
Councillor Kevin Williams next. Oh, sorry, Mr Gaetz-Houses wants to respond to that last comment, I believe.
Yeah, apologies. So, on that point of target not applicable, it was the year in which we transitioned from the old database to a new system. During that time, as well as that, there was a huge amount of practice change at that time in terms of, of the work to ensure that clients migrating over to the new system, as we did so, the care was looked at and a lot of clients were reviewed. So, in that period of transition, we didn't want to set a target using the old database when we knew there would be a huge amount of validation of those figures, because at that point it wouldn't be a case. We couldn't robustly say that the figure produced in 2014-15 would be produced in exactly the same way in 2015 because of the transition to the new database. So, it would have been disingenuous to set a target, knowing that we wouldn't be comparing like for, like for like. So, when we set the plan last year, when it was passed by council last year, a statement was put in there that a target wouldn't be set for, for that particular measure, and we're looking then to sort of look at the old way and the new way of measuring, just to ensure we've got like for like, and that can actually show a reliable long-term trend. Because for us, what's important for this is the trend. We know we have the demographic pressures, as was mentioned. We know we have a particular cost envelope, but actually the key thing is people are better looked at, supported in their own community, and what's key for us is the long-term trend in ensuring that that moves in the, in the right direction. The target itself would have been a fairly arbitrary number, given the transition of the, of the database.
Councillor Kevin Williams, followed by councillor Peter Farley.
Thank you, Chair. In that same block, the bottom one says percentage of all potentially homeless households for whom homelessness was prevented for at least six months. Couple of years ago it was at 24%, last year it's gone up to 55%, which is excellent, you know, well done everybody, that's really worth a pat on the back. It's still a bit low from what I'd like to see, but is there a reason why it says no longer at National P I? Please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This particular measure, there have been huge problems with the measurement at a national level of prevention around homelessness. We've measured it in a number of different ways, and petitioned Welsh Government over the years around the definition of those measures. Such is the complexity of that situation, Welsh Government actually opted to drop that as a, as a national measure. So, while we continue, and colleagues in housing, Ian Bakewell and his teams, to track that using local measures, it's now been removed from the national framework, because Welsh Government simply don't feel it's comparable across the 22, the 22 councils.
But a good result.
A good result.
Councillor Farley?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I put the question to you, Matt, because it's your paper, but I appreciate you may not be the person to answer it, but there may be somebody here who could. I'm looking at page 63, I'm looking at CHR/002, and I'm wondering why our sickness is increasing, why we're in the bottom quartile of authorities, and yet, that's for the sickness leave of our staff, and yet, we are supposedly, what, the first or second healthiest county in Wales. There's a discrepancy there, and I wonder if we have any idea why it might be so. I've got some ideas, but I'd like to hear what other people think.
Someone like to answer that one, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I mean, I'm sort of expecting this question, if I'm perfectly honest with you, questions that have been raised when this has been considered previously through Cabinet and Select Committee. So, I guess, on the one hand, I guess a bit of a disappointment, really, in terms of the successes that we'd had in 2014-15 in driving down sickness, and clearly that's deteriorated in 15-16, and I guess some of the headline messaging around that is around, I guess, the figures driven by a combination, I guess, of long-term sick cases as opposed to short-term, and furthermore, we are seeing an increase in sickness relating to stress and psychological reasons, which is clearly a concern, and something that we are actively looking at at the moment. So, clearly, we cannot do anything about the sickness data that's now been, obviously, that has now crystallised for 15-16, but clearly what we can do moving forward is to put a plan of action in place, which is what we're doing. So, the, it's multifaceted, as you'd expect. We have provided further rollout of training to managers to make sure that they are suitably equipped, particularly in looking at identifying early signs of potential of sickness when it relates to stress and psychological reasons, and making sure that staff are being provided with the support that they need. We have embarked on, and you may have seen a lot of the wellbeing courses that we are running for staff at the moment, and we've seen significant take-up of those by our workforce. We've also looked to enhance the systems, we've engaged with management and leadership and staff themselves to understand us, to, you know, look at some of the systemic issues, I guess, preventing management from being proactive in addressing sickness. And we have ensured that sickness data is both being provided on a timely basis to managers, first off, but further to that, that we are looking to continue to enhance our systems, and we are looking at some self-service functionality that will basically allow managers at any point to be able to access the sickness data for their teams. So, there's a whole, there's a whole raft of, I guess, measures that we've put in place. I guess what's, and I've got to take this with a bit of caution, really, I mean, the sickness data was far removed from where I, I guess I wanted it for 15-16. The quarter-one data that's come out is running out at 10.17 days, which is clearly ahead of the position that was reported last year. I think where I'm, I guess I'm cautious at the moment, is that we do tend to see sickness being at lower levels in the early parts of the year. So, this has got to be really closely monitored, we've got to be deep on the data on this, on this, and make sure that we are reacting accordingly.
Can I, can I thank, come back on that?
Could I say something before you come back? Because members are asking questions, and then they're coming back. Put all your questions in one basket, please, and so we can get them all out of the way in the first place.
Well...
Councillor Farley?
I needed to have the answer to the first question before I could, before I could follow up. Thank you for your answer, if I might say, a rounded and good answer, and I'm grateful not to be thanked for asking a good question, because I know that's what it was. The other, I'd just make two, another question and then a suggestion. Do we have an occupational health service? And if so, what is it? And could we consider entering for the Welsh Government-sponsored corporate health standard, which might help us to address some of these issues?
So, the first part of your question, that's an easy one to answer, yes, we do have an occupational health service, yes, we do. And clearly, we make sure that people who have gone off on sick, you know, as appropriate, get that support, same applies with counselling, et cetera. In terms of the corporate health standard, that is something we have looked at a couple of times in recent years. I think the conclusion that we've drawn when we've looked at it is that it probably doesn't add significantly to the, to what we're doing already, it probably actually provides additional administration burden to us, and that's probably the reason, well, I think that's the conclusion that's been drawn as to why we've not looked actively pursue it any further. But what we have done is look at, I guess, all core aspects of it, and made sure that that, you know, there are lines drawn across in terms of what we're actually doing on the ground at the moment. And I would think, because the corporate health standard is not a static thing, that is continually evolving, almost certainly we would look to undertake a further review of that in time.
I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Armand Watts?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's just going back to that reference to, I think we were talking about care homes or care, not independent care, but living care. And I'm mindful that it's been recently reported nationally that business models have changed for many of those providers, Four Seasons being one of them notably locally, at Sebry Nursing Home, where many of those people have now got to find, or families have got to find additional provision, and I'm sure the local authority are helping with that before Christmas. And I know that that is very, very distressing for those people, and there are quite a number of them, but that's a national picture, and I just wondered whether or not there was a consensus, there was enough money in the system to face, if you like, this potential ever-increasing and very obvious problem that we have in a very, very increasing elderly population. I sound like the Prime Minister of Japan now, don't I? But effectively, a massive problem coming our way with regard to the elderly folk in Monmasia, and we haven't really got the resources, or any, as far as I can see, to be honest with you, any idea of where we're going to be in five or 10 years from now, dealing with some of the people respectfully in this room?
Mrs Marchant?
I think this is why social services and health is a critical part of what we're doing in terms of future Monmasia, because when we look at our demographics and we look at the charts, it clearly challenges us, doesn't it? And in a sense, we've been managing that pressure for a number of years, and adult social services has taken 2.8 million out of its budget in the last number of years, and has managed to improve outcomes for people by doing things differently and doing things better, which is around listening to people, listening to what matters to them, giving them proportionate care and support, and supporting them really to live the lives they want to live. And we've got people well into their 90s who continue to contribute and volunteer within our facilities, areas like Mardi Park are really, I think, leading-edge examples, the remodelling of spin of care at home through what we now call Monmasia Care at Home, rather than just the Reichland Project, because it is rolled out right across, you know, these are really leading-edge examples. But the scale of the challenge yet to come is understood, it's why we, future Monmasia work that we're doing, we're looking at sort of foresight and how we model and what the different scenarios are. We're actively trying to do, again, very leading-edge work to adapt those models of care and support, where we've managed to remodel in-house services, and working with independent sector providers in domiciliary care, to really try and adapt that and have new relationships with those providers, which nobody else has really ever done. We've talked about outcomes and commissioning for outcomes, and you look at all the examples across the UK, nobody's really done it, so it's really leading-edge stuff, and it's hard-nosed stuff in a business sense, because if we don't do this, the market will shape itself, as we're seeing through decisions of individual providers, be they domiciliary or be they care home providers, which are actively happening. The positive is, as Matt referred to in terms of the previous answer, in terms of our reliance on care homes, that is reducing, people would prefer to stay in their own homes, but it means those people who are in care homes are increasingly frail, and the support that we need around them, and the quality of care home provision that we need to be commissioning needs to be up there. The financial position is incredibly challenging for us, but the evidence has shown that by continuing to transform, do things differently, have the right conversations with people, and be brave about shaping the market, that's where the answers lie.
I may though, the question was, is there enough money in the system? And that really hasn't been answered. You're doing things differently, you're showing some innovation there, so on and so forth. Is there enough money in the system to meet this potential crisis? I want an honest answer, please.
I think that's what, where our modelling work will take us, is an answer around that in terms of what does the scale of social care support look like going forward? What we've demonstrated to date is that there has been enough money in the system, because we've been able to support people better and actually reduce resources. We're showing challenges at the moment in terms of our budgetary positions, and we are having to do that, that really, I guess, in-depth modelling about what the budget provision needs to be going forward. It's not an easy answer, I guess, it's not a yes or no answer, it's that we need the evidence and the modelling to tell... It's that we need the evidence and the modelling to tell us whether the models of care and support and wellbeing that we've put in place will continue to allow us to meet need against those demographics that we face, or whether it is a situation where we will be needing to look at requesting of council more resource for adult social services. But it's not a simple yes or no answer.
Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at some of the KPIs on electronic page 293, 294, or 59 and 60, I think, in the actual report. And if you look particularly at SCC 002, the percentage of children looked after who have experienced one or more changes of school while being looked after, we are bottom out of all the authorities. And if you go over the page to SCC 003 D, E and F, again, all about looked-after children, we're bottom or next to bottom. Now, percentages are frightening things, and we might be doing ourselves a big disservice here by putting those percentages, i.e. if we've got two looked-after children that are in that category as opposed to somebody else that's got 200. What we need is more clarity here to actually put ourselves in a better or worse position, if that is the case. Percentages are one thing, but we need cohorts all the way down the line to be able to explain really where we are. Wonder if you could give us your ideas on that, please?
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much for the comments. I think it's a very fierce challenge, actually, and one that's been raised at select committees and which has been addressed when these reports come through to select committees. Clearly, with a very small number of indicators, that isn't possible. It's down to individuals of one or two, and it would mean an individual could be identified. But in the majority of cases, it's something we do in the Select Committee quarterly reports, and I think something we can introduce in this improvement plan.
Councillor Heeson.
Thank you, Chair. Three short questions. One is to do with the state of our roads, THS 0121, on whatever page you want, 62 or 288. I'm surprised to find that it's 10% of our roads are in overall poor condition. I think they're all in my ward, by the look of it.
No, not.
Not in your ward as well, are they? Just making as a comment that I think that, how that is measured, I'm not sure. But the more important point to me is the percentage of municipal waste collected by local authorities, that is improving, and I think that's a good thing. I believe we are the, it says a seventh in Wales, but I thought we were the third in Wales. But then the next bit is the percentage of municipal waste collected by local authorities impaired for reuse and recycled. We don't seem to have achieved what we need to achieve in terms of recycling food waste. I don't know if Councillor Jones could enlarge on where we are going in the future, because I understand at the moment we're running in the last quarter 70%. Are we going to, able to retain that, or are we going to be chasing a target next year? Thank you.
Someone wish to answer that question, please?
It was a rubbish question, it was.
Sorry, Councillor Murphy.
I saw what you did there, Tony. We're actively pursuing, together with Torvine and Blaine and Gwent, the procurement of commercial service for anaerobic digestion, which will, I'm quite certain, drive up the figures on food waste.
Thank you. You're Councillor Howard and Councillor Crook, and I want to move on. Please, the next item.
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep it as brief as I can. What I do find this afternoon with this report is, we've mentioned Select's this and Select's that. Would it not be within our interest as a council to include the Select's findings from the scrutiny of the report coming to them within the initial report? Because we just seem to be asking questions perhaps may have been asked at Select. And I just want to inquire on an aspect of Peter Farley, Councillor Farley's question to Peter Davies, senior officer, about this sickness, et cetera. If Peter can remember, you came to us on the 21st of July, and actually, we gave you a little bit of a good questioning on the aspect of sickness, staff, how they felt. But we did question, and we wanted to know actually the survey that staff had had, and we wanted to see a copy of the survey. And we have asked Peter to come back to us on regular intervals, on staffing surveys and how we want to proceed to engage and make sure our staff feel wanted within the authority. Can Peter answer when we're going to see that survey of the last survey you carried out? Because I do feel that doing an ad hoc survey with staff isn't possibly what we were looking for, and we were looking for a more in-depth survey with staff, because it did bring home to us exactly how they do feel, because some of the questions perhaps weren't as you may have put them on the surveys we may have probably wanted to see. But we don't know that because we haven't seen the survey. So I'd like to see the survey. It's in the minutes if you want to take a look at it. You were going to email the survey out to all members from the last survey, and perhaps it may be us as members. We are, 43 of us, bar the seven, but all of us do engage, and we like to feel that the staff want to be wanted. So it may be going down your question, Councillor Farley, a way forward in trying to get to the bottom of why our staff or the numbers of staff now are struggling with where we are as a council at the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Davies.
An apology and possibly an oversight, I guess, in terms of the distribution of the survey information, and certainly that will be forthcoming. I guess in terms of the wider aspect of your question, which is with regards to, I guess, our staff engagement and our approach, I guess, in terms of surveying of staff, we're currently looking at that at the moment. We've currently got a pilot running in aspects of, I guess, within my directorate. And a case whereby it may give us, I guess, a more fleet of foot, a more fleet of foot tool to be able to gauge staff views and opinions and a bit more real-time, I guess, than has previously been the case. Because I guess the more traditional staff survey, which is run periodically, and I guess at best on a 12, on an annual basis, it gives you a certain level of insight and information. But I think the approach that we took in the last staff survey, we did a deep piece of engagement with staff to understand actually the things that were important to them and the questions that they felt that we needed to be asking of them, and we designed the survey around that. I don't think we're going to alter that approach, if I'm honest with you. I mean, I think that's the way that we should really be going. So as I said, we'll be looking at our approach now in the coming weeks and months, and undoubtedly looking to survey staff either wholly, or as I said, if this pilot that we're undertaking is successful, we will be looking to do it through that technology.
And my question about making sure the select reports or when they have the documents are actually within the confines of today's paper, I think that'd be so valuable. I know we can talk, but if we can stop a lot of talking, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I think that's a very good point, something we'll look to incorporate in the covering report next time.
Thank you. Councillor Crook.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on a point made earlier. One of the officers was saying that it's the sickness that we haven't quite got. I heard round that it's obviously important, but it's something that we don't have the data on. Obviously, earlier on in this meeting in section nine B, maybe? But when we were talking about the auditing, that was another thing that they pulled up, that we don't have satisfactory sort of grasp on the sickness that we have in the county and that we're not recording it properly. Obviously, that's been, this is an issue that's been highlighted just in this meeting by the auditor and by yourself. What are we doing about it? I mean, obviously, if it's been highlighted by two sort of very senior people, we should have a plan in place already.
Thank you.
The issue that was referred to, I guess, earlier on the agenda. First off, the issue's been resolved now. It was as a result of the means by which we were calculating the sickness figure through the year. So I'm going to try and explain this as easily as I can. We were calculating sickness figures quarterly, quarter-one, quarter-two, quarter-three and quarter-four, and it was based on information that was obviously being provided by managers for those quarters. What we'd identified in our system is that, for example, if staff had, sorry, if managers had submitted sickness, for example, in quarter-two and it related to quarter-one, it wasn't being picked up and updated in our Q1 stats. So it was just a system oversight, which was addressed. It was obviously picked up by Wales Audit Office. We've adjusted our system accordingly, and our systems now going forward are robust and accurate.
Sorry, but you also highlighted it as a current issue, previous just now when you were speaking.
In terms of the quantum of sickness. I mean, yeah, I guess my response earlier, just in terms of the actions that we're taking to look to address that situation, sort of outline how we're responding to that. I mean, I guess I echo my comments in terms of yes disappointment, in terms of where sickness ended up at the end of 15-16. Clearly, it's of core focus to us at the moment, and in terms of the action we're taking, so.
Right, members. You've seen the recommendations being put to you. Is there seconded to that recommendation? Yes, okay. All in favour, please? Thank you very much. That's carried. We're now on item 11, the reappointment of Monmashia Local Access Forum, councillor Hobson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Monmashia Local Access Forum is a statutory body set up to provide advice to the local authority and other agencies on the improvement of public access to land in the area for the purposes of open air recreation and enjoyment of the area. These bodies have a statutory duty to have regard to the relevant advice given by the Local Access Forum, and the forum is required to meet at least twice a year. The council, as an appointing authority, is required to establish and maintain membership of the forum of between 12 and 22 members in accordance with those regulations. The regulations only allow members to continue for three years from the first meeting of each term, that is to November of this year, and following the publication of statutory notices and other publicity, applications have been received from 13 individuals to join the forum. Moving on to the recommendations, Mr. Chairman. A, that the current four LAF members who have reapplied during the summer continue their membership. That B, that the nine new applicants be shortlisted for appointment. And C, a panel of three members is established to interview them using the selections criteria set out in the guidance. Now, this is the same process that we've used in the past, and previously it was agreed that each group leader would nominate a member to be on that panel. The panel will consider any further applications if the Local Access Forum decides it needs to recruit any more members to fill any particular skills or interest gaps. D, that the county council representative, of which there is only one at the moment, is agreed today. Currently, the council's representative is councillor Anne Webb. That E, the retiring members, including the previous chairman, be thanked for their contribution. And that F, members consider whether the Local Access Forum chair should in future report annually either to scrutiny or to Cabinet or to both. This would reflect best practice advice on governance as advised.
Thank you, councillor Hobson. The council needs to nominate its representative to serve on the Local Access Forum. Councillor Butroney.
I just want to talk about C, Chairman. I wish to nominate from the Labour Group, Peter Farley, councillor Peter Farley.
Councillor Prosser, who's on?
I'm not sure where we are, but if it's nominating somebody, I propose that my colleague, Anne Webb, continue on that forum as her representative.
Leader.
Yeah, no. I'll have to come back with a name to sit on the selection panel. I haven't got the name at the moment, but endorse what councillor Prosser said about Anne Webb continuing in role. It's the role to last until, I think, the annual council next year, and happy with all of the recommendations that are on here. And I actually believe also that in F, the consideration should be given that the Local Access Forum chair reporting to probably this council actually annually would be a very good thing and be really quite interesting and an opportunity to appreciate the work that that forum has put in over the year on our behalf.
Thank you. Councillor Howard.
Chairman, I have to come back to yourselves with a nomination, but I'm sure if the Labour Party want to put somebody else on there, I'm sure they'd be welcome to take our nomination. Thank you.
What are your wishes, please? Or you can discuss it at some point in the next day or so, and then make the nomination and inform councillor Hobson. Could you do that, please? Thank you. Recommendations there, move all the recommendations, accept the recommendations on the nominations. Thank you very much.
Members, this is a report which is going before all councils of the 10 southeast Wales, of the Cardiff capital region. Its purpose is to, as you read there, to set out interim government, governance arrangements to take forward the provisions of the Cardiff capital region and the deal which was signed by all leaders back in March of this year, and that was to approve the use of an invest to redesign fund, which we agreed to fund £30,000 as a Monmashia contribution toward. We are now asking the council to consider delegating some further responsibilities to me to keep Monmashia in the game, as it were, and also to ask us to contribute our portion, which is a prorated amount of a sum of half a million for the region, and that sum you'll see in 2.2 in the recommendations, again, £30,835. In March 16, as I alluded to, Cabinet Committee approved to provide delegated authority to myself to sign that city deal document on behalf of the council, and that happened obviously across the other authorities as well. And we have been working closely with the UK and Welsh Government in continuing to develop the content and structure of the final city deal agreement, which will eventually come before members, probably early in the new year, for us to consider if we want to be an active party in that. And I hope, I hope we really do want to do that. A key stage on the way to achieving this outcome is developing the appropriate governance arrangements through which to guide the programme's implementation activity and provide the parameters in which the key stakeholders are able to enact the city deal mandate. The Cardiff Capital Region City Deal Project Board also agreed that individual leaders would take responsibility for a theme of the proposed deal in order to regularise this position. It's proposed that these roles be formalised, and it's, the report is asking for myself in conjunction with a leader of Torvine Council to lead on the innovation, digital and business engagement theme. It is further proposed that these interim arrangements continue, but with the project board being renamed the Cardiff Capital Region City Deal Shadow Joint Cabinet, rather than a mouthful. It is important, though, to note, and I'm reading in 36 here, as at present, decision-making rests with each authority. The shadow joint committee would not be a decision-making body save for those powers which are delegated in each of the local authority leaders within accordance to this report. An independent commission for economic growth and competitiveness has been established, and it will be reporting back to us at the end of October with some real intelligence into the sectors of skills and stakeholders need to develop a really credible economic strategy for the region going forward. In order to advance progress being made on the deal and to support the costs involved in setting up the bodies, structures and arrangements, which are detailed in item two above, a further contribution to the Cardiff Capital Region central resource is required of around, well, of £30,835. A programme director and programme manager have been appointed to provide necessary support for the programme. These appointments are on a secondary basis, making them easy to un- These appointments are on a secondary basis, making them easy to unwind in the event that the city deal does not proceed. Chairman, the recommendations there are significant in two one. They're quite a lot. I'll work my way through them. So we're asking for delegated authority to be given to the leader of the council to make and take such decisions as are necessary in respect to continue the interim governance arrangements, subject to the project board. Currently, with the ten local authority leaders being renamed, that Cardiff Capital Region City Deal Shadow Joint Cabinet. The establishment of the following new bodies, non-statutory bodies. The non-statutory Regional Transport Authority, a group which will be working very closely on those connectivity issues. Cardiff Capital Region Skills and Employment Board, which is basically the current LSKIP. Cardiff Capital Region Business Organisation, that is being developed by business itself across the region and we'll be getting an update tomorrow at our meeting. And Cardiff Capital Region Economic Growth Partnership, a fundamental part of the governance structure laid down within the deal which I signed back in March. And also the Independent Growth Competitive Commission, which is already actually doing its work for us. To appoint the programme director in due course, to agree shadow joint cabinet member portfolios. I've just shared what I've been asked to do. And to seek agreement to procure and appoint specialist legal advisers to draft all appropriate documents for the Cardiff Capital Region city deal, including but not limited to the joint agreement from the Crown Commercial Services Framework Agreement. And finally, to approve the use of investor redesign reserve totaling for sixteen seventeen totaling thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-five as our contribution toward that central resource. So the recommendations are there, Chairman. Just for information, members, leaders and chief execs meet on a fortnightly basis. We're meeting tomorrow morning where I'll be presenting to leaders and chief execs the work so far on the innovation and business engagement side of things and how those are promoted, how those are moving forward. There is a really strong commitment by the ten leaders to this whole agenda, recognising a one point two eight billion opportunity here. You know, and what we need to help all members right across the region to understand, you know, this deal is not just a grant of money we need to spend. We've got to use this wisely. This has to raise GVA, it has to create jobs. That's a fundamental expectation of a deal, raising of GVA across the region by five percent and the creation of twenty-five thousand jobs over the period of the deal. So that's a tall order. So projects and themes will be worked up and are starting to be worked up to be presented to us in due course to give consideration to. But what we can take some reassurance from is by that time, there will be a really robust assurance framework that various things which come forward have to be gone through. They will have to meet various metrics which can, which can give us reassurance that they can deliver the types of expectation I just mentioned, the GVA uplift and the jobs. It's going to mean different things to different authorities at different times. But I think the good thing, well, I'm sure the good thing, and the evidence shows around the rest of the UK, that everybody will gain in the long run. Citizens of Monmasheer will engage, will benefit in time, as will everywhere else. But everyone will have probably something different to celebrate as we move forward. But the main thing is that we improve the economic lot of South Wales. Our GVA per head is the second lowest in the UK compared with one region to the north east of England. We're somewhere around about seventeen thousand pounds GVA per head of population. Doesn't mean a lot to anybody, but it is very low. If you think it's probably somewhere more like forty-five thousand pounds per head in London or, you know, probably thirty thousand in Worcester or something like that. Monmasheer, as a part of that package, is probably around twenty-three thousand pounds per head. So we're more economically active than many areas, but we need to help our fellow communities. You know, it's in all of our interests to help the whole of south east Wales grow and prosper and give real life chances to those families wherever they are in the region going forward. So I hope we can continue to play our part in this journey. And I hope when we bring something more substantial to you, either at the end of this year or early next year, that we will be able to endorse it and really unlock some massive opportunities for our county and for the region as a whole. So I happily move the recommendations, Mr Chairman, and look forward to the discussion.
Before we go any further, there's a second, I, thank you, second. Councillor Watts?
I am. I mean, it is a really interesting, really important thing. I do genuinely worry about, you know, the current state of the economy because we seem to be enjoying the benefits of Mark Carney's, I guess, you know, kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Quantitative easing, but specifically, you know, the changes he's made in the economy without actually, we haven't actually left Europe yet. And that's the thing that people often forget. And I think Wales, once we leave Europe, I think Wales is, you know, it's going to be really, really tough. So I guess my question to.
Yeah, could you direct the question on the matter in hand?
Well, no, I know you don't have a.
I'm not interested in you.
Our members have a limited understanding of geopolitical issues, Chair. Please direct the question. But I am trying to talk about the issue. So I am not, I'm just, I'm just making, I'm entitled to.
Please, please, let's have some order. I'm asking members to direct their questions to the issues under discussion. I'm not interested in European or anything else.
Chair was, Chair, is that what is he specifically going to do? You mentioned you're going to keep us in the game and you obviously clearly have an understanding in your brief there. But what are you specifically going to do for Monmasheer? And my other secondary question is, whilst I appreciate that is in cabinet papers that they put the leader forward. There are other people, business people, people who have interest in economics, some of them, that would like that opportunity. Why is it going to be the leader of this group? I know other leaders do it, but is there anything written in stone?
Councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Firstly, the EU funding element, sorry, Armand got a concern, what will that do? Well, we've already, as ten leaders, met with the First Minister to get some reassurance because a portion of their allocation was EU funded. And the Wales Government are confident that whatever happens with EU, you know, the deal is safe from their side of things, which is reassuring. And that's captured again, I see, in the First Minister's statement early this week on their governance package for the five years. So I'm pleased that's in there. What will it mean to Monmasheer? Difficult to quantify at the moment, Armand. I'm hoping, though, and we all hope, that the nature of the areas we're looking at, for instance, the innovation agenda, which is basically building on those high growth industries which are already present in our region, dragging in inward investment. There's an expectation that the deal of one point two billion will lever in up to four billion additional investment and create, you know, a real, an opportunity with new businesses, high tech businesses developing here and offering the opportunity of, you know, high order jobs, many in certainly the digital field running into forty or fifty thousand average wage incomes. Now, if we can create opportunities, and not just in those areas, but in lots of areas right across the region, it gives people, it gives people hope and opportunity. Add that to good connectivity, so electrify the valleys and regular services in and out around the region, that people, wherever they sit in the region, have an opportunity to grow up and raise their families and have a good job in those areas. And I want the opportunity for our social capital, our young, strong assets of young people who are living in Monmasheer, I want them to have an opportunity to get a good job and keep, and grow up and stay here. We don't want to lose so many of our young people to get jobs in Reading and places like that. And then we see in this aging population in Monmasheer. We need to work hard to find real opportunities. I'm hoping that some of that inward investment will locate and see that Monmasheer is a gateway to Wales with such a, you know, the opportunities that lie here, that there will be massive potential unlocked. So I don't know what it'll look like, Armand. And I don't think any leader will know what it looks like in their area as yet. Some will know that there may be a track coming, some may realise there'll be a new bus route coming. But we can't quantify it. And it's not about spending the grant on big shiny stuff. This is where we've got to get out of that mindset. This is about us pulling together as a region, a region of elected representatives whose, it's our responsibility to do something about this country which is really on the floor economically. If we really believe that, we've got to work together and put political things aside and make something happen. Too, too, too long have we ignored the situation here. We've seen billions and billions of EU money funnelled into pet projects which have delivered nothing across south east Wales. That's got to stop. We've got to start doing things in a far different and more productive way. And I'm hoping that we can really unlock some massive potential in this area. And probably when we come back in February, well, I'm sure when we come back in February, we'll have a clearer picture of what this will mean to all regions of the Cardiff capital region. And why is it me on there? Well, I'm the leader of the council, you may like it or not, but I have a responsibility as leader of this council to represent us in that forum. I'm sure that any several other members could do that job just as well. Indeed, I have asked my deputy leaders to step in on my behalf when I can't make it, and that's welcome. But I will continue to do my very best in delivering this. I was one of the three members who negotiated this deal. As I was pleased to be able to bring that opportunity to us. So I hope, and I've been asked to be by the other leaders, to be vice chairman of the city region group. So I hope they have confidence in me. So I hope you can have that confidence as well.
Councillor Greenland, councillor Greenland?
Thank you, Chair. This deal is so important to the region. And we have to grasp it with all, every opportunity. And I'm sure, and I anticipate, that this report will get overwhelming, if not unanimous, support from this council. Because I think we recognise how important it is that we try and lift not just Monmasheer, but the whole of this region. And we cannot simply say, what's Monmasheer going to get out of it? What's the region going to get out of it? And Monmasheer will be a part of that region. I want also just to respond to councillor Watts. Why is it the leader? Well, I think we've just heard in both the leader's opening remarks and his response just now why he is the person who should be representing us. He is very well respected by all the other leaders in the region. He carries now the brief for innovation and business, one of the most important areas of this city deal. And I have every confidence that he is doing an extraordinary good job. This isn't just something that takes him an hour here and there. This additional responsibility, representing Monmasheer, is a huge time commitment that he does on top of his other duties here as leader. And he does it with enthusiasm and with a professionalism that I feel proud that we have such a person who is able to represent us. And it's not only the leader, but other officers of this council are also involved, as he has said. Obviously, the chief executive plays a leading part as well. And indeed, as does Kelly Byrne, sitting on a very important area of the work, which will lead us going forward. And innovation, business, if this is going to work, it's all about innovation and business, frankly. Yes, we need better transport links, we all know that, and we're going to get it through the metro. But if we are to make real use of this once, maybe not in a lifetime, but once in many, many years opportunity, then we have to grasp it with all hands and we have to give it encouragement. Many people said that you couldn't get ten authorities, ten leaders working together. I think actually these leaders have shown that they are prepared to see the wider picture. And I hope that all of them will continue, and I'm sure in the case of Monmasheer, we will continue to be a leading light through the leadership that we've got in councillor Peter Fox.
Councillor Petroni and councillor Easton.
Well, at least they've developed a catchy name. You can't even, even the acronym's long. And responding to councillor Watts and the appointment of Peter Fox as our representative, who's covering the theme of innovation, digital and business. I mean, it's reassuring councillor Fox is there, I suppose, given that, you know, we've done really well with a good track record with CMC squared and a hundred and forty thousand pounds of taxpayers' money thrown away. But I wonder if we won't replicate that record. On a more detailed point, on point five, Independent Growth and Competitive Commission. What, how was that commission sort of populated? Who was appointed? What was the process? What's their kind of, are they the ones going to develop the detailed proposals for the capital region city? And on the shadow joint cabinet, the monies were given to that, to the general problem, to the project, the shadow joint cabinet. Do those roles get remunerated? If not, or if so, is that charged to that money that has been collectively put together? Is it also, when, in that role as your, of innovation, digital and business, when you're going to those meetings with that hat on, is it remunerated, when you do charge for your expenses in terms of fuel? And if so, would that come to this council or would that come to the collective fund?
Could you answer that one? No, please.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you, Armand. I'm not sure quite where you were going with your first comment. As for the commission, it's headed up by Professor Greg Clark, a very well-known, respected individual who's done a lot of these things. I can't just remember the other four or five names of the commission members. It's a task and finish group who are really having an in-depth look, in the same way as Greg Clark led in Sydney, for instance, and other places around the world, to really get a deep understanding so that we can be helped in honing the themes going forward. It's, it was commissioned a month or six weeks ago, probably might be two months ago. And it finishes, as I say, the end of the month. But there's continuous dialogue with them and they've taken evidence from all over the place. The recommendations of how that was formed was brought to the joint committee. The lead for that is Cardiff Council, Cardiff leader Phil Bale, with his officers were leading on that role. And they brought their recommendations for us. No, we don't get paid for this role. They've not even been considered about this role. This is us coming together for the greater good of the region. It's part of a leader's responsibility to act with colleagues in this. And I'm disappointed you would even think that we were looking to do that. As regarding my expenses for travelling, all councillors' expenses for travelling, it's only travelling expenses, they are picked up by this authority. But at individual authorities, that's the case with most outside bodies unless they specifically have some setup to address that. At the moment, we are ten authorities loosely working together. What we are, and we are still in this shadow stage. It's not until we get to the position of formally signing the deal and actually moving that next step where some more of a statutory body gets put in place, that there will be an entity in its own right. And I'm sure those elements of governance will be covered at that time. So I can be very clear, though, there's no cabinet member getting paid anything. We, in fact, we are actually running ourselves ragged around trying to do this on top of everything else. But there is a good, solid relationship. And politics, sadly, it's not in this chamber, but sadly, but goodly in that chamber when we're together, is put right aside. We work closely together because there's a bigger issue here than the scoring points.
Councillor Easton and then followed by councillor Francis Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed that there's a non-statutory transport portfolio within the, within the city region. The electrification is coming through to Cardiff and eventually Swansea. We've got the metro coming. There's been a five-point plan put before by the Welsh Government on transport across Wales. So I'd ask the leader in terms of. So I'd ask the leader, in terms of the need for enhanced transport within the south east of Monmouthshire and north of Monmouthshire, that every effort is made to, to ensure that we are well and truly represented in terms of the metro, well and truly represented in terms of the potential subsidies for public transport, which is waning in, waning across Monmouthshire. And that, that this particular body, maybe it's non-statutory because transport is a, is an all Wales matter, but there need to be some more drive to ensure that, particularly for the members of our Transport Working Group here, that we, we deliver what they are seeking to do across South East Wales and Monmouthshire.
Counselor Taylor, and then perhaps the leader come back after Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sure that we all welcome this, the proposals contained within this report. But I do think, even if, you know, council finds it appropriate to delegate this, these matters to the leader, that what is missing for me is the means by which the leader will report back on these obviously incredibly important undertakings. I fully appreciate he mentions coming back to us in, you know, in, in the new year, in February time. But I would suggest what is missing is a 2.3 which says that, for example, there will be a regular report to wherever, cabinet. There needs to be some means, I think, of just keeping. So I would suggest that we add a 2.3, which is that a regular reporting mechanism is agreed in cabinet, that we can all be party to and see. Because the progress, as Counselor Fox has outlined, is incredibly important, not only to the county, the region, but, but wider than that. So I would welcome that if that can be agreed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Leader, do you want to respond to the last two questions?
Yeah, no, thanks, thanks very much. And thanks both for the questions. Tony, absolutely agree for you, agree with you. The Wales Government have got Transport for Wales set up to do a lot of their transport, thinking what we want, what we've got here, we want a statutory, a non-statutory regional transport authority to actually do exactly what you're saying, to put our views, to liaise closely with, with Transport for Wales, to be, you know, a statutory consultancy, to work closely, really to, to make sure that, and advise on, on what needs to happen. And it is felt, we've got to discuss this in, in one of our next meetings, that we'll probably be involving relative cabinet members who would have those, those responsibilities and bringing them together into subgroups to help the, the portfolio holder be able to, to articulate the, the views of all, all of the area through to whoever. So it's highly likely that people like Brian, for instance, would be invited to join a, a working group or a subgroup to work with the, the leader with responsibility for transport. And, and I hope that, that goes forward with, with all, all of the same sort of elements. I think reporting back is important. It's worth knowing that this has gone to select committee three times, so there's been quite a lot of feedback in, in select committee. And as soon as I have something which is, you know, which is important to report back to you, I really want to do that. Because it's so important for me to keep you on board with this, because, you know, I don't want it to be really strange to you when we come to finally have a report and all, you know, I want you to have the confidence to sign up. So it is important. And I, I take your point, Francis, and we'll, we'll think about how we can get a, a regular feedback to you. Because things are moving quite fast, you can tell because we're meeting fortnightly, that there will be decisions expected to make tomorrow and there'll be, you know, things that follow in fortnight. So we will put something in place to give you that confidence. But I'm sure select committee are still going to want updates now and again as well, so they can keep a track on, on things. So I, I will pledge to do what I can to keep you up to speed on everything.
Thank you for that. We have Counselor Prosser, Counselor Kevin Williams, Counselor Howarth, Counselor Dowie, Counselor Powell and Counselor Sarah Jones, and then we'll go to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I wish I'd put my hand up a bit earlier, actually, because a lot of what I was going to say was said by the leader, Counselor Greenland and some, a few others. Basically, we need to be in it to win it, yeah? We've got to be in this process. We're talking about our future generations of Monmouthshire, you know, and South East Wales. And so it's very important that we keep active and keep the momentum going. I myself, my personal opinion, we've got some very competent officers and leaders, which we don't get enough, give enough credit to sometimes, and they each take decisions and put things in place for everybody's benefit. And, and we should give that some assurance from time to time. As regards innovation, we're an innovative county, aren't we? And I've challenged our leader on, on various things, on innovation, and he demonstrates to me a, a good grasp of what is required, the areas we need to look at, and I'm very confident in his performance, leading us forward with that portfolio. They couldn't have picked a better person, in my opinion, personal opinion. This document is the same document being presented to all the councils, yeah? So it's to get the, to keep the governance arrangements going, and this won't be the last bite of the cherry. You know, it's not, oh, we're going to sign this now and that's it. There's going to be further bites as we go along. There's a lot of variables in the system. It's all about Europe, all sorts of things. But we have to keep the momentum up and keep the enthusiasm up as well. And so for that reason, I got no problem with this particular proposal, and I endorse the motion to accept it in this council.
Thank you. Counselor Kevin Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I want to use the name momentum for obvious reasons. I, I've got some concerns around some of the structures that are put in there, particularly around the Skills and Employment Board, really. I mean, Peter, you mentioned the dreaded L skip word. I hope it's not going to be a reincarnation of the same thing. I hope it's going to be something a little bit better than what L skip have actually turned out, because I deal with L skip on a daily basis. One of the, the main mysteries for me have been the transport issue and everybody that I've spoken to, when you talk about the Cardiff City Deal, they say, yes, to build what they call a metro. Now, that's got several images in my head as soon as you use that. I mean, the first one was like the monorail in Disney, where you just hop on and hop off 20 feet up in the air. I thought it was a really good idea. In line with things like ESF funding, sorry, Chair, it is, it is relevant because part of the Welsh Government's budget for skills and employment is heavily subsidised by ESF funds for the next five years. And then when that runs out, well, we don't know where the money's going to be coming from. It's good to see that this has probably been guaranteed. With the metro system, and perhaps Peter can enlighten me a little bit tonight, I know there's no detail on it yet, but for instance, you can't get from Pontyple to Abigavenny on a Saturday after about four o'clock, because, because there's no bus service. So, and simple things like that, are they going to be taken into account? Is it going to be like, for want of a better phrase, a tube system above ground, where you can just hop on a bus, hop on a train, you know, ride the pushback and get from one end of Wales to the other in 20 minutes? Or is, I find, understanding the grasp of what's coming through with it would be good for me, because when people ask me, I say, yes, a metro system, I've seen the map, but I'd like a bit more detail of how it's going to all integrate together. It'd be a really good idea. I mean, it's a novel idea to have a public transport system that integrates itself. I, I remember it when I was a kid, it was called National Welsh Buses at the time, I think. But it'd be good if we could have something like that, reincarnated, that probably would work for people. If it's going to be done on a profit basis, I mean, that's the reason now you can't go from Pontyple to Abigavenny, because they say there's no money and it's only two people on the bus. Will that be overcome and will we have a proper integrated transport system at the end of it? And, you know, I've got no issues with you being on the board, that's fine. But I'd, I'd like a bit more meat on the boughs if possible.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank, thank, thank Kevin. The, the Skills and Employment Board, you know, I hope too that it will be slightly broader and stronger than L skip. We were presented by the Chair of, to, by the Chair of L skip fortnight ago, we gave some reassurance of the, their readiness to adapt, to change, because clearly, when the commission comes forward with a lot of stuff, you know, we might sort of find we've got a skills gap, a huge skills gap in certain areas, which we're going to have to move quickly, along with our university colleagues to address that gap. I've already met with vice chancellors and had a lot of conversations around that, and been meeting with also many businesses, I've got 84 businesses to, to contact who, to get, to get their views on things, and that would include their skills needs and things going forward. So, yeah, a lot of expectation around skills board, and, and of course, they, the Skills Working Group are going to need to understand what the innovation working group's throwing out, what the transport working group's throwing out, because it impinges on the nature of that skills base and, and what's going to be required. ESF funding is a worry for certainly our universities, as I said, have met with vice chancellors and they've really quite concerned about that, because certainly their overseas student, overseas students, it's really not that, that side of things, and there is concern going forward. But it takes some, as I shared earlier, some assurance from the, the First Minister that, you know, we will find a way through this, because the European element is, whilst it's significant, is a small percentage of the, of, of the whole. From the transport, now, yeah, it's a good, it's a good point. Metro has never been just about trains, it's been multimodal forms of transport. And what that might look like, yeah, we're not 100% sure, but it could be, you know, it'd be an electric light rail probably in, in many areas. That could be done through different types of renewables, the electric, it could be battery-powered trains, there could be a whole raft of different solutions, which we haven't really been exposed to in a great deal of detail. We're unlikely to see rail tracks flying up the 449 to Monmouth, you know, we'll see metro through to, to Seven Tunnel Junction, we know that, we hope. We're going to see a new station in Mecca, you know, in time, I'm sure we'll see things around the network around Abigavenny. What we will, I'm sure, see is a very, a bus surface, a bus service which, which will be different to anything we've experienced. I think that will evolve. Rapid bus type system with its own designated lanes possibly, integrated ticketing for all multi modes of transport. I think that's going to have to come about. It's going to have, if, if we're going to have buses linking things up in the same way as trains run, they've got to run efficiently and, and can't be held up. So, you know, there's going to be a lot of work at understanding what that might mean. I can see probably in the longer term, some really high quality bus services, I described, perhaps joining up some parts of Monmouthshire to fill those gaps in, to give that reliable, regular service in the same way as a, as a, as an electric, electrified rail might mean at the valleys. I'm hoping we can see that, so that the people in Monmouth might have an opportunity to get to places on a regular basis at a reg, at a sensible price, in line with the, the rest of, of that. So the, you know, the metro isn't a clear picture. I don't think we'll see any buses hanging off posts or tunnels across the ground or, or wheelless vehicles which are floating along the ground yet. But if we invest heavily in our innovation agenda, who knows? We could well get to the point where we do see that next stage of public transport evolve, you know, be that the hydrogen-driven buses, different things like that. You know, there's a lot of fantastic things happening in South Wales, a lot of best practice. It's all a bit disparate though, and it needs to be pulled together to give a massively beneficial solution. And all the ingredients here, we can do it.
Thank you. Before Counselor Howarth comes in, Mrs Byrne, like to say something.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, because I think it's a really important point, and I think the point raised around L skip, the Learning, Skills and Innovation Partnership is a, is a really important one as well, because that does need to be repurposed, it's not just about a change of name. And I think the reason I have confidence is because the what of the city deal, what is it we're going to deliver? What sectors are we going to invest in? What, what kinds of wealth will we create? That will shape the agenda for skills, because it will tell them the kind of skills availability, the nature of the skills and the supply that we need to bring forward. So there are how, so they've got to correspond to the what we create through the city deal. And then the second point really is just, you know, that explanation of innovation, it isn't just about businesses and business growth, it is about a lens that we can apply to all areas of the city deal, and the metro is a great one. So we don't want a metro just to be a transport system that ships low-paid, low-skill people around the region really efficiently, that's not going to change the game. So I think it comes back to some of the points that the leader made, you know, can innovation challenge the metro? To think about renewable energy, whether that's hydrogen or it's battery-powered, can we think about the data that a metro will generate and the uses to which we put that? You know, can we think about the metro as an opportunity to grow the next generation of scientists, engineers, data analysts, the kinds of jobs we need with the salary growth that we need that will really help us change the game? So I think innovation, rather than just seeing it as a strand and just about business growth, is something that we have to apply across the city deal. So we get the challenges in and we understand the scale of the opportunity that is open to us.
Counselor Howarth, followed by Counselor Dowie.
Thank you, Leader, Chairman, and I just want to question Peter. I've got no issues with the leader being on the board and representing Monmouthshire and taking things forward for us to the next stage. There are risks. I think the risk is probably next May for some of the councils, what comes back. That is a big risk, that's a major factor in probably to the next stage, but we don't have a lot of time. I'd just like to answer a couple of que, ask a couple of questions. Hinkley Point, there's a massive skill shortage, or there's going to be. You're going to find a lot of people who live in Wales will be going down to Devon that way, totally thousands of people, skilled people, aspirations maybe for Wales. We've got the issues with the steelworks. There's lots of things in Wales which are going to be playing a major part in the future of Wales in probably the next decade. And I mean, it's going to come quickly, in 10 years. We as a council, we're either in or out. I think for, for where we are, I think it's a good deal, what we have out of it for an investment, long term. We could end up with having a brighter future for our younger persons. But my question is, who is going to keep an eye on all this as we go along this little journey? Is it going to be a joint, joint scrutiny committee of 10 authorities? Who, who's going to just keep the finger on, making sure that actually we are delivering what we say for the loan or for whatever it is, the monies of 1.2, 1.3 billion pounds? Who is going to actually watch that? Watch that brief? Is it going to be the board? Because a board who, it can't be the board anyway, we all know that won't happen. So actually, my question to the leader is, is could you go back to the other nine leaders and say, long term, guys, how are we going to look at this? How are we going to make sure that each authority is happy with the way things are going? If they're not, who's going to report back to them?
Before Counselor Dowie comes in, we'll respond to that, please.
Yeah, thanks, Simon. There are some challenges. I think you, the first one is probably the biggest one. At the moment, well, 10 leaders are very much involved and geared up for this and want it to happen. You know, there's still 10 sets of councils like ourselves, or nine others like ourselves, who are still trying to understand this. And I think that there is a challenge for us as leaders, whilst we work together closely in that arena, we will need to come together and work closely with each other in each other's arenas to help the councils to understand the bigger picture. Because, you know, there may be people who have deeper concerns or different expectations. So we need to have a real truthful set of, of points for them to help them see just what's happening. I would hate to feel that an authority gets to the point in, in January or February and hasn't got the information and decides not to join, and then misses a massive opportunity for its, its, its community going forward. So it's in all of our interests to help everyone get on board. So if we can get through that hurdle and everybody's signed up, then we do have to look at the, the, the deeper opportunities. Hinkley Point is an interesting point. There will be a lot of jobs created there, there will be supply chains for that as well. And we need to actually see where the opportunities are, which stretch into Wales and, and help and prepare and give our people the opportunity to take advantage of whatever might come forward there. So there could be huge supply chains. There are a, a lot of exciting things happening across Wales with various other things like alternative energy, you know, lagoons. There's a, there's a lot of innovation here and opportunities for, for, for many people who live here. As for governance, there will be an expectation with any deal that it will go through a series of independent assessments on regular, what they call windows, which will assess if we are achieving the expectations of the deal. And we'll be making sure that we are hitting the buttons, or otherwise, next tranches of money will not be released. That's why it's so important that the metrics and the assessment framework are massively robust to make sure that anything-
robust to make sure that anything we embark on can deliver. There will be lots of people scrutinising this, not only ourselves within any leadership board, but the economic growth partnership which will be built up of business communities, HE, government officials, I expect. Every, there'll be business communities, business organisations, regional business council, there will be eyes looking all over this. But I'm sure there will be a need for us to look about, what about the local government accountability and how do we be sure that our councils are doing all they need to do? So, I think there's a deeper conversation in due course around what does the scrutiny of the deal look like and is that some sort of joint arrangement or whatever? And I'm not really sure on that yet. Paul might have a deeper perspective having spoken with chief execs and who are more advanced in the governance thinking than perhaps we are as leaders. I think that may have covered it.
Councillor Dowie, followed by councillor Power, followed by councillor Sarah Jones, now we go to the vote. Thank you. Councillor Dowie.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is quite an exciting thing. It is the biggest project that we have seen for, well, going back to nineteen sixty-eight actually, it goes back that far. And for once, we've got lucky and we've got a second opportunity to do something in south east Wales, South Wales particularly. I was really surprised, Petru, when you made this shot about some, what money was being wasted or tossed aside by Monmashia County Council. I just sat there and thought about the legion amounts of money that had been wasted on projects that had gone fat across the whole of Wales with the government, let alone the councils. But we don't need to be talking in those sort of terms. We've got the opportunity here to get in on the game and the game that is happening, you've only got to look across the water. Go and have a drive down through Avonmouth and see what the development is going on there. You've got Hinkley Point coming up, what opportunities that offers for steel and the securing of the steel industry in South Wales. You're going to have another big power station being built just across the river from us at Oldsbury. You know, the opportunities are really quite extraordinary for us. You've got people with vision actually talking about getting that side of the river together and this side of the river together through the three Great Western cities concept as a start. There is so much, so many possibilities for Wales here. It would not come again. You've got from, right from GCHQ, right the way down to Bristol and beyond, you've got this high tech science project that they've got going there. They're building a high tech science college on, at Bartley Power Station. There is a big effort going on to develop this area of the region and it isn't about boundaries between Wales and England. This, as far as big business is concerned, is a region. We've got to get out of thinking about the fact that it might be Wales, Scotland, Gloucestershire, or Monmashia, or whatever it is. This is a region and there is opportunity coming to this region. We've got the opportunity with Peter and the city concept down here to do great things and we need to get ourselves on a different plane, not be small thinkers, we need imaginative thinkers. The work that will go into the two power stations, let alone any other work that goes on, will provide employment for young people for about the next fifteen, twenty years.
Could we contribute on the capital?
Yeah, I know, but I feel passionate about this and we, it is not...
That might be, but we need to contribute.
Even for the steel industry, if you want to secure the steel industry, you've got to go with these sort of projects. So, come on, guys, let's have a really enthusiastic approach to this and not be little people with no ambition.
Thank you. Councillor Power.
Thank you, chairman. I see this as a wonderful opportunity and there'll be things happening after my days, I expect. But what I see is, is great, is not just all the transport and that, but is the businesses which I don't even understand, they might be quite small here, but they've got head offices in other countries, providing opportunities for our young students. We have many of our students go over into England University, in fact, three of my grandchildren have. And we want to have them coming back here to interesting, improving jobs, which I think this will provide, and have them back here so that we keep our bright pupils and our bright, intelligent youngsters in this area, in Wales, throughout Wales, so that it promotes all these businesses, makes us a much better place to live and we won't be just an aging population living here. Thank you.
Councillor Sarah Jones.
I'll be super brief. Just really quickly, this is on our Work Programme as Economy Committee, but I fully take on Frances's point, I think it should be explicitly made reference to more communication in terms of how the project's going forward. And the second thing for me is, I think there's a crisis in our communities and that crisis is broadband provision. You look at our provision of the Superfast Community rollout, we're looking at around seventy percent compared to Blindogwent's ninety-six percent. Broadband and digital is going to underpin a lot of what this city deal takes forward. If we can't get this right, we're going to really struggle and be at a disadvantage compared to our neighbours. So, it's really a plea that we can promote Monmashia. I know our officers do a great job, but we need to do more to try and get this broadband provision in our communities. And we've got our seminar on the third of October, so that'll be a great opportunity for us as members to scrutinise BT on their lack of rollout of the Superfast project in Monmashia.
Thank you. We got the recommendations and if someone can revise me differently, I'm looking at following supporting documentation really, it's an in principle endorsement of a city deal for the capital city region, which is, which is, yeah, yeah, I know, this is all it, but it was done in February this year, that's the point I wanted to make. So, you have the recommendations, I don't know if the leader wants to spell them out again, but they are there and we'll take a vote on it.
Mr Chairman, can I thank everybody for their comments, been really helpful. I take on the final point of Sarah and we will put in place something which can give you confidence so you get in regular updates. Mr Chairman, I suggest I did work through those recommendations earlier, can I suggest we move them on block?
Thank you, leader. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's clearly carried. Item twelve, report of the Chief Officer's Resources Future Schools Programme. That's deferred. So, we've got members' questions, the questions are as they are presented. Councillor Hackett, do you want to respond, please?
Many thanks, chairman. Firstly, can I thank councillor Hayward for his question and giving me this opportunity to provide an update on our significant investment in the future of our children and young people and our communities. I'm sure the council will be aware of our four secondary school strategy, to which within Band A is developing two brand new comprehensive schools, one in the north and one in the south of the county. They have been designed to be efficient, effective and economic settings, but above all else, schools that will inspire our young children to learn and develop as engaged and confident members of our community. The current position of the programme of Band A is Raglan School was completed last year, delivered on programme and budget. Welsh Medium, we're in discussions with Duffrin High School on their new site, so that can provide Welsh medium education for our children in that part of the county. Coldicott Secondary School has started work in March and is due for completion, the start of the academic year, September two thousand and seventeen. Monmashia Comprehensive School has, the enabling works have been completed and the main works are about to start. The development of such a significant investment, the largest in our council's history, is inevitably complex. We're co-funders of the schools with the Welsh Government and also work very closely with the contractor. In the time since we were awarded the funding, there have been some significant changes to the environment in which we're working. The June vote, which was being mentioned earlier, has created some uncertainty in the construction industry. Also, that period before that vote had seen growth in the construction sector and there has been national inflationary pressures on both materials and labour. I will be clear with members that this has caused some concerns and challenges and it has led to extensive discussions amongst our partners. We're in that final phase of those discussions about the affordability and the deliverability of our two new schools, but I am absolutely confident in their delivery. However, due to the commercial nature of some of those discussions, I'm unable to disclose those details today. In some ways councillor Hayward, your question is a week or two early and so can I confirm to members that there is a project board early October and then at our October meeting on the twentieth of October, I will be bringing a full report to council and this will set out the consequence of the challenges I've alluded to earlier and the partner's approach to meeting these challenges. Councillor Hayward, may I use your question to ask councillors here today if they would like to perhaps visit Coldicott School and see how that's going and perhaps have an information session at the same time to be able to ask further questions so that they, everybody can ask questions and not just yourself?
Councillor Hayward, a supplementary question, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's rather disturbing news and I'm sure we'd all welcome a seminar on it, but will the cabinet member please confirm that the promises made to the residents of Monmouth will be kept? In particular, will she confirm that the swimming pool will still be built to the same specification as promised and in the same timescales as the school itself? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Hackett.
Thank you very much. The swimming pool, yes, will most certainly be built, that has always been said right from the beginning and that is a promise that we made to the residents of Monmouth and I see no reason whatsoever to regate on that, that promise that was made. Then most certainly will be built a swimming pool and not only will it be built, but it will be better than the swimming pool that is there at the moment, that is at the end of its life and in effect will need refurbishing or we do at some times. So, not only a brand new school, a brand new swimming pool as well. So, I think that is certainly wonderful. The swimming pool as such isn't part of my brief as such, so I can give an outline on that. And I think that would come as part of the seminar where those sort of questions could be asked, but most certainly, as far as that reassurance, there is a reassurance that the promises that we have made in the past to residents most certainly will continue.
Thank you. The next question is to councillor, county councillor, sorry, Brian Jones.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you both for your question. The Monmouth household waste recycling facility is particularly well used by the people of Monmouth and surrounding areas. At peak times, particularly during the summer months, citizens can be affected if the site has to close for containers to be moved and replaced. The ability to expand the site is restricted on a number of fronts. The first one is the topography of the existing site. The site layout isn't ideal because it's on a hill, it's in sort of inner corner. We have looked at trying to make extra room on site within the confines of the existing boundary, but there are no solutions to be offered. Extending into the hill is also difficult and costly. We have undertaken also assessments of the cost of a new site on the bottom field, that's between the entrance and the dual carriageway behind the depot, but unfortunately, the council does not have two million pounds plus to build a new site. And I'm sure you don't need me to remind you of that fact. We have looked at whether the increase in recycling would be enough to reduce costs and put that surplus into potential borrowing, but again, the maths didn't stack up. Therefore, we have to work with what we have. Logistically, the site has to be shut when the containers are moved. Our contractors do their very best to reduce the impact on citizens and turnaround times are kept to a minimum. But I do appreciate that when it's busy, queues can form. We can't be rigid about the closing times for those containers to be changed because, you know, the containers can only be moved when they are full and there's no point in moving half empty containers. All we can do is to encourage residents to make use of the curbside service as much as possible, to reduce their waste overall, to think of reusing and donating unwanted items so that they can reduce their visits to the site. But I undertake, Bob, that we will raise this again with the contractor, but be assured they are working within the rules that they were given originally and doing ultimately what is best for the resident. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Hayward, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please. I thank councillor Jones for his answer, it is informative, but it's the council that have driven people to use these recycling depots. We've just had the improvement plan in front of us and I see that in improvement objective four, which is managing locally accessible services, there is no mention whatsoever about waste collection or recycling. There is in objective five...
Councillor Hayward, what is your supplementary question?
I'd just introduce my supplementary, if I might, a statement there that it's all about reaching targets from the Welsh Government. But it does say quite clearly that the report sets the council's long term recycling strategy in Monmashia to ensure it's future proofed in terms of public acceptability. And this is the point I wanted to make on my question here, we, because we are now charging for collecting garden waste, because we have reduced the recycling to once a fortnight, because we're asking the public to take, collect different items on different dates and to sort things into blue bags and red bags, the use of the recycling facilities has increased tremendously.
Yeah, what's the question, please? You were beating about the bush, directors.
The question is, does the cabinet member think we have a moral duty, regardless of money, do we have a moral duty to provide the facilities necessary for the people in Monmouth to take their waste and recycling because we have pushed them into taking it there instead of curbside collections, which he would like them to encourage?
Thank you. Councillor Jones.
Thank you. I think the days of us having moral responsibilities are perhaps past because unfortunately, you can have moral responsibilities if you've got the wherewithal to provide them. And I'm afraid to say, we have not got the wherewithal to provide them. But I will undertake, as I said before, to see what improvements we can make on this site without incurring too heavy a cost. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all. Members, officers, the meeting is now closed. Thank you.